We're going to call to order the regular meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, as we do each week, to ask our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Christina Alvarado.
Please.
(inaudible)
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Chamberlain Housing with regard to 810 Delta Lane, and no action was taken. And the council approved a final settlement with Judy Guess, in the case of City of West Sacramento versus, maybe the attorney can help, is it Randall Business Management?
R&amp;L.
Oh, R&amp;L, sorry, R&amp;L Business Management and others. This is dismissal of defendant Judy Guess in exchange for a $50,000 payment by Ms. Guess to the city. And that settlement was approved by a 5-0 vote. Cabalder, Roscoe, Ledeza, Sandin, and Guerrero voting in the affirmative. So with that, we'll proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted in our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from taking action or having a substantive conversation about issues raised in Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other issue tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart just indicates which agenda item is currently being considered. The clerk accepts the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's completed and the public testimony and/or the council questions and discussion have begun, she doesn't take any additional cards. So if you're here for a specific agenda item, be sure to get the card in as soon as you can, but definitely by the end of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can be a source of anxiety and difficulty, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or, actually applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first is by Christina Alvarado. Welcome.
Thank you, council members. I just, my name's Christina Alvarado, and I'm the resident here of West Sacramento. And I just wanted to verify that you guys got receipt of the, we put together some packets containing Oakland's initiative to decriminalize antiotens for healing purpose, especially for mental health, and I wanted to see if our council members were interested in emulating the same resolution here within our city.
Okay, thanks. And, oh yes, thanks. And then the next request is by Michael Bisch.
My name is Michael Bisch. I'm with Yolo Food Bank. I'm the executive director. The Food Bank has been distributing nutritious food in West Sacramento since our founding in 1971. We currently have 24 monthly distributions in West Sacramento with five more starting in September. Four of them are going to be right across the street here at the Community College, and then the other one is going to be down at the mosque further down West Capitol. We are currently distributing more than 500,000 pounds of food per year with a $1 million retail value to nearly 10,000 West Sacramento residents, and yet we are meeting less than half the need. I attended here two weeks ago to watch Barry Bloom's presentation, and it was pretty interesting. But Barry was sharing only part of the story. The economic research and analysis paints a very clear picture of a bifurcated, inequitable regional economy that is benefiting the haves while leaving the have-nots behind. For example, this is a Bookings Institute research report that was produced last year, and it was paid for by CACOG and by Barry's organization. It says, among other things, 34% of the region's residents do not earn enough to cover basic household expenses. In other words, 34% are financially upside down. That's one-third. More than 30% of Black and Hispanic residents are members of these upside-down households. It goes on to say that the region is one of the worst-ranking regions in the U.S. when it comes to inclusion. We are ranked number 84 out of 100 across the nation, number 84. So there's only 16 regions that are worse off than this one when it comes to economic inclusion. So I asked Barry after his presentation, you know, why wasn't there more focus on economic inclusion? And he said, "Yeah, it's a big problem in this region. In fact, it's a crisis." And he acknowledged our terrible ranking. He was aware of that. I said, "Well, why isn't there more conversation going on around this? I don't hear it in the public discourse. I don't hear electeds talking about this crisis." His response was, and this was his term, not mine, "They're terrified." I don't know if the electeds are terrified or not terrified. No elected has ever told me they've ever been terrified about anything. But it does beg the question, why isn't there more conversation about this, and why aren't concerted plans being developed to address such high levels of poverty, food insecurity, mental health, and what have you? So I, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Michael. All right, those are the two requests we had under Item 1A. So before we proceed to Item 1, because I know this is Ms. Alvarado's, I think maybe one of your first meetings at the councils, which we've been, so the, I know the document has been received, because I've received it, I think the other members of the council have as well, but just on, just like this weekend. So it's just been received, and individual council members and staff review all of the many suggestions and proposals that the city receives. So I can't give you, I can't give you an answer today, and we're not allowed to talk about it, because it wasn't on our post-it agenda, but we'll follow up. Okay? Thanks so much. Thanks for being here tonight. Item 1B is council communications. Are there reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yolo County Housing met on August 14th, and we approved a new policy on residential individual relief from excess utility charges and approved our Section 8 Management Assessment Program certification. We also started on strategic planning for the agency for the next decade. So we started that conversation. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on August 15th. We approved flood control assessments for fiscal year 2019-20, or 20, yeah, 2019-20. We authorized a purchase agreement for surplus soil with the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, and we responded to the 2018-19 Yolo County Grand Jury Final Report, and we denied a claim from AECOM for change request number 89. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on August 18th, and we're disputing a solar, some solar energy charges, and we heard about potential infill project ideas for additional housing from the executive director of that agency. And then earlier today, we had held the city-county two-by-two, and Mayor Protem and I were, Roscoe and I were there, and she'll be reporting on that meeting. And I also participated in the YED Fall 2019 Planning, which is scheduled for October 23rd, if you want to put that on your calendar. We are focusing this program on positive youth development, and more information's coming soon. Planning Commissioner Bernadette Austin also attended the planning meeting and is involved with planning this session. And last Thursday, I represented the mayor at a meeting with the mayor and a delegation from the city of San Leandro, and they were interested in learning about our West Sacramento Kids Home Run and also Sacramento's Thousand Strong programs. So we were information sharing there, and a couple of our staff members from the city were also there presenting as well, and also some of our interns. So they were really interested in the student stories. Finally, yesterday, the city's flood program staff and I met with Emily Richardson, who is a senior legislative assistant to Congresswoman Doris Matsui, to brief her on our levy projects and to visit the Southport Levy Improvement Project. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, other reports from our official assignments and other representation duties? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. The League of Cities Sacramento Valley Board of Directors convened on August 12th, and we discussed topics which can be included in the future Sac Valley Area Managers Group meetings, which focused on concerns among cities to hire police officers and also provide additional support for police officers experiencing stressful conditions. Pete Carr added that the city managers meet the Fourth Friday of January, March, June, and September, and that there are resources you can share with city managers to address these concerns. On the league board update, it was reported that the League of Cities' first vice president, Randon Lane, Marietta City Council member, stepped down from his city and league positions to accept a presidential appointment, so there is a vacancy that they are seeking, that they are recruiting for. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ledeza?
Thank you. I have a few things to report on tonight. Since I was not at the last meeting, I did want to give an update on, if you didn't, the mayor's commission on climate change.
Definitely not on the whole thing.
Yeah. On April, August 1st, we had a meeting of the mayor's commission on climate change, and it was the first time that commission met in West Sacramento, and we met at the CalSTRS boardroom. So it gave an opportunity for folks more around the region to be able to be welcomed into our city and see one of the highlights on the local front, and that is the CalSTRS building. And Jack Ennis was there showing off the plans for the $300 million expansion. That'll be as green-friendly as any in the region. So that was a high point. I thank the mayor for making some opening remarks to the commission and level-setting a bit on the goals of the commission and setting forth, hopefully, the agenda of, as you put it, the joys of creating climate change, which could be possible. And also thanks to David Tilly from our city staff for making a presentation that night. I don't think he's here tonight, is he? No? Okay. So he was there that night, giving a presentation on all the work that has been done in West Sacramento, our climate action plan, and talking about a timeline to update that. And the work we'll be doing in outreach in weeks to come, and that includes presentations coming up at the end of the month with our West Sac Chamber of Commerce. There are some other agenda items of note, and mainly around the discussion that may be bringing up back through the city staff. Arnold Orchard from SMUD gave an update on the California Mobility Center, which is consortium of organizations that are looking at mobility options throughout the region that are funding some R&amp;D, for lack of a better term, and research into options. And this is an area that they're looking at that was of interest to me is around how to deal with the goods movement and other types of areas where there's opportunities that the port may felt, actually, in all industrial areas may benefit from. So again, that's an area that came up. And we also heard the preliminary recommendations from the Mobility Technical Advisory Committee, who had various preliminary recommendations around mobility options, ways to improve transit, and other areas that they're starting to think about. The process will be is that those, that the technical advisor committee received feedback from the commission, who are then going back to really hone in those recommendations, and then they'll come back to the commission to adopt or at least start the process of adoption, so they can make recommendations to both councils. So again, some good progress there, and looking forward to kind of getting into that. I will add that in a CACOG report on mobility trends, they did report out on our success of both the jump bike options and the VIA program. So we're heavily featured on that for the work we've done. So kudos to all the staff and our city for making that progress. Speaking of transit, on August, August 12th, was a meeting of the Yolo County Transit District, and there are a few things on there of note. One is we approved the micro-transit pilot, which I think began today, at least outreach began today, in Nice Landing, which was a big move for the transit, for the transit district as it's piloting a program to meet rural needs in the county, which is well-needed. We also adopted a policy to, in essence, allow students in Yolo County and youth to ride for free on a pilot basis for one year. So there was a request by the district director to find funding through the agencies. We have a little bit of a gap there, but we all are going to contribute to that, and so we did adopt that. We asked for further clarification on some implementation issues, including reaching out to our school districts as a mechanism to help encourage riders on transit buses. And so again, another good opportunity for mobility in our city that will be coming soon. And then we also got an update on the comprehensive operational analysis, which led to a discussion that chair, and I've asked for the board to conduct a strategic plan, planning session for the board, outline its priorities ahead of that comprehensive operation analysis, so that the board has its priorities well-laid out before some of these things become actual changes to district. I think that's the right path for the district to take, to make sure our priorities are clear, and then we can adopt any changes that are recommended out of the analysis. That analysis isn't, we'll get preliminary findings in October, November, I think November, but then the final report will come out the first quarter of 2020. I should also update, because you may have seen in social media, that there was a fire at YCTD last week, and it had to do with the Comerse Natural Gas lines that are there that help fuel not just the buses, which contracted out to a group called Chulium, but it also helps local trucking and others in the area. It was contained, the women fire department was on it, but there was no damage to any of the, no injuries, everybody evacuated. But they are investigating that, and I have no findings to report, just wanted to give everybody an update on that. And finally, this past week, the 15th, as an alternative, alternate, I attended CACOG meeting on behalf of West Sacramento. It was a light agenda, a lot of things we approved on the consent, but the most important thing we did do is approve the four-county funding round, recommendations that have been in the works. I think the mayor's been reporting on that on his CACOG reports. That did go through with no questions asked. That's about $2.8 million for improvements to West Capitol Avenue for all the things we've been talking about the last few years regarding improved bike lanes, lighting, and everything else. So again, it was a big move, thanks to the mayor for all the work going into that vote, so it made my job easy that day. But again, that's good news. But as well, we did get an outline or a presentation on, a really interesting presentation on suburban corridors and town centers and how we can plan to make those better. There were lots of, it generated a lot of discussion about how you take suburban centers that were developed maybe in the '60s or '70s that were in suburban areas, lots of parking lots that are now vacant. We can think of a couple in our area that maybe have come that way, where big-box stores or grocery stores are no longer, are no longer of use, and they're empty or vacant. And so there's some strategies and what you can do there to try to improve those. And I think out of that, we asked, we had asked CACOG to maybe come back to that and look at real tactical strategies on how to fund them, what mechanisms you can use to do that, to kind of make those things happen. So hopefully, at CACOG, the mayor will report back on another time when they do come back with some really tangible tools to kind of make those things happen. So those are the three things I had. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Thank you. I only have two things to report out. Specifically, I'll begin with the August 14th meeting of the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. We had a meeting and discussed several things. We received several presentations. One of those was a status update for the 10-year Strategic Action Plan, and another was a presentation on the South County Ag program, where we learned about the benefits of bringing recycled water to a region and restoring groundwater levels, as well as improvements to habitat and wetlands and riparian forests. We discussed pricing and incentive principles in groundwater accounting and discussed how to encourage participation in this program. Also, we also discussed the septic-to-sewer evaluation program and received a presentation by one of the engineers. This is specifically about conversion from septic to sewer systems, and the discussion revolved around several of the identified projects in the Sacramento region, identified as Freeport and Old Florintown, rural areas where a lot of the properties still work off of septic, and how we can move them toward sewer. I did inquire of the engineer as to whether or not there were any project in West Sacramento that were identified and/or if they are considering discussing with our Public Works Director or staff identifying potential projects in rural parts of West Sacramento where we still have septic on property. And at the time, they said they would look into it, that there's no current projects identified, that there's, I think that what was said was that we didn't have enough numbers, but I did speak with our city manager today and said maybe we should put that on the radar for future consideration. Maybe we could make a connection and see what it is that we need to do in order to potentially benefit from that assistance. Councilmember Bab Sandin and I met with the city-county two-by-two committee today, and that includes also supervisors Oscar Viegas, who's a chair, and supervisor Gary Sandy. We received a good amount of very helpful and useful information. These presentations came from Dan Furtnick, from Chief of Probation, and he's discussed the Community Corrections Partnership and their strategic plan, and I thought that was very informative to see how many supervised individuals we have coming from West Sacramento as in comparison to the region. They talked also about our Adult Day Reporting Center, one of the two that's in the region, which has tremendous capacity and has been doing wonderful things, but we just needed to look at the trends in crimes and how they're supervising individuals. We also received a presentation by Brian Vaughn with Health and Human Services, who talked about public health in our policy decisions, and I found that incredibly informative. Sarah Sechrist, who is with Adult and Aging, and she talked about homeless funding in the region, and I was actually really surprised to receive so much information about some of the grant programs that we, and the funding that we've been receiving here in West Sacramento. And we've been doing a fantastic job at addressing the issue. And finally, Steve Jensen, Health Educator Program Manager, and he talked to us about the flavor tobacco ban that many municipalities and cities are considering, and just the benefits and the health benefits of the ban. And I had further discussions with our city manager about this topic and may propose to bring it up in the future for council consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I just had one report, and the Bike Share Steering Committee, which is composed of us and the cities of Davis and Sacramento, and the Air District, and I think UC Davis also, met to consider the annual report from Jump on the Equity Plan that guides the allocation of bicycles and also on a new pricing proposal from Jump. And in terms of the results on the data side of the house, the system is performing as was anticipated. In general, the minimum level of bikes that are required to be in West Sacramento has been met, and also within all three cities, there are each, there are zones for high-priority placement essentially, that where Jump is required to assure that there's a minimum, a certain number of bikes in those zones, in particular in those zones in West Sacramento, one of which, one includes essentially the downtown and the bridge district and the southern part of Washington. And the other includes essentially Washington Square to Fifth and C and that portion of the, that portion of Broderick. And more or less, they're hitting those targets, pretty much on target. The number of bikes in the city did experience a pretty significant drop from, it was rising and rising and rising up through March, and then in April dropped to just below the minimum number, and it's recovered back to the minimum number. So they're meeting their standard, but I raised some concerns with them that, you know, we're trying to manage a transportation system here, and so if it's a supply-side issue that's caused that drop, if they allocated those bikes to UC Davis or some other location, and people in our city have, are making changes to their habits of mobility, and suddenly the number of bikes has been reduced by 10 or 20%, it's a significant problem that we know we need to have some stability in addition to the minimum number. So this is one of the issues that they're going to be looking at, as to what's caused that dip, even though we're still above the standard. On pricing, Jump has come forward with a proposal to increase their prices. This is not unexpected, but they're proposing to recalibrate their pricing structure, which would have a 50 cent increase in the basic unlock fee, which has been a dollar, and now it's a dollar 50, and then a slight change in the cost per minute as well. The impacts on short rides, you know, five to 10 minutes are not significant. The total ride, the total ride price would change by 50 cents. It's not a big, it's not a huge deal. For the longer, for the much longer rides, 30 minutes or more, the price would increase by maybe 3.50, so it might, would essentially double for the very long rides. That's also appropriate, and the city has been not intended to be a substitute for, you know, bike rentals and for, you know, bike touring and that sort of thing. So that is an appropriate way to balance out the structure of the pricing. About half the rides in the system, all three cities, are 10 minutes or less, and those rides, the prices won't change significantly. So the committee did concur with the pricing proposal from Jump, and we also had presentations from both Davis and West Sacramento on progress on the additional scooters. Now, I mention this in part because we're, you know, we have this whole agreement through this joint process with Davis and Sacramento about Jump, but, and the council recalled, this is, you know, this field has changed so quickly. When we set this whole thing up, there was no one else. And I think Sacramento's view at the time especially was they didn't want anybody else. They just wanted a Jump-operated system and didn't want any other operators. So the system is really, our Jump relationship is set up like we're regulating a public utility in some sense. That's why we review pricing, and it's why we have these service-level standards. But now Sacramento has Lime Bike, and both of our cities have procedures for other market entries, and so, you know, there's the potential for more competition, but only Jump isn't regulated as a utility. And so it's starting, it is raising some questions about, like, what is the right relationship here, not just with Jump, but with the others, and how do you manage the system as opposed to the single operator? But it was too quick for us to resolve it just for the bike pricing. We don't regulate the scooter pricing for any of the operators, so that was our report. Clearly, the Lime piece is going to be an issue for us if Lime doesn't come in soon, since we're experiencing, you know, a not-trivial number of Lime scooters that are in the city without a permit from Lime. So I know one of the issues I raised at the committee was whether or not we have sufficient disincentives for operators who get a permit in Sacramento but don't get one here. You know, are we charging enough essentially for scooters that are illegally here? Not for the purpose of making money, but simply for the purpose of getting them to, you know, to participate in the, in both cities regulatory structures to assure appropriate safety and equity. So more to come on that. All right, so we're not going to do any appointments this evening, so that's going to bring us then to the consent agenda. The city manager has requested that we continue Item 3 to a date uncertain, although that's likely to be September 5th, but the request has been to continue that item to a date uncertain, so without objection, that'll be the order. Are there any other items on consent for a separate question or comment? Or should we remove? Councilmember Guerrero?
Item 7, please. Four.
Four, seven, any others?
Four.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Okay. Then with that, we'll proceed to Item 4, which is consideration of the 2019 Second Quarter Report on 21st Century Policing. Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Thank you. Chief? Good afternoon.
It's our evening, I think.
Good afternoon.
He did, he did. It's always sunny for the police chief.
I want to be polite.
I'll just cover them all. That's okay.
Thank you, first off, for always providing such... Thank you, first off, for always providing such thorough reports. I know that on behalf of the department, you provide us with the information you're supposed to provide us, but also include a lot more information for us to digest. And so, you know, I'm always looking forward to this report and the presentation. I was mulling through, and I had, I know in our last meeting, I had asked about the proportion of robberies. And I appreciate, first off, that there was a pullout of the robberies that would be considered shoplift with force versus what would, you know, armed robbery, strong-arm robberies, whatnot, because I think that oftentimes the public may not, unless you're trained eye, you might think a robbery is a robbery, it's a stick 'em up. First question is, the SDA's robberies that are occurring in our retail establishments, those are considered violent crime, correct?
It depends on the circumstances, you know. Again, they typically will originate as a shoplift, and then if they get into an altercation with a security guard or something like that, then that can increase to basically classified as a robbery, yes.
But for the sake of this report, the classification of those, when you call it a robbery, it is classified as a violent crime.
That's correct.
Okay. I think, and this is just my perspective, I loved that that was a pullout, because I'd want, when we look at, okay, well, we have an increase of violent crime, and just for the public's knowledge, oftentimes we'll get what we call an SDA's robbery, where there's a person who's shoplifting, and a loss prevention officer will try to contact that person, and then they bump past them or knock them out of the way to get out of the building. Well, that's considered robbery, because it's a theft with the use of force or fear. But oftentimes, if it's included in the violent crime stat, it makes it sound like West Sacramento is a dangerous place, when in fact, it's just something that's isolated to Walmart and it. So I think in future reports, I'd like to continue that pullout, so that way we can really compare what, you know, the violent, violent crimes are when we talk about robberies. The other thing was, and I can follow up with you outside of this meeting, is when we talk about burglaries, burglaries are, you know, as you know, Chief, different in complexion. You could have a home invasion burglary, or you could have a commercial burglary of a retail establishment. And I was looking a little bit more, so I can go out there and educate the community about what types of trends we have or what our numbers are looking like. For me, I'm more concerned, obviously, with people's homes getting burglarized, and when, and where. So that way, you know, if we need to educate the public about, you know, how to insulate themselves better, like if it's happening during school hours when kids are skipping school. The other thing I noticed, at least across the river, is with our vehicle thefts, there's a trend now with thieves to now target cars that are older, because the law says that the car has to be of value of, you know, a certain amount, right? So there's a threshold. If it's an old car that doesn't, you know, 1990 Acura, that doesn't reach that threshold, then it's a misdemeanor as opposed to a felony conduct. And so I guess my concern here was, I know that we necessarily have to condense this information to make it, I mean, it's multiple pages for us, for our review, which is fantastic, and I know it's a lot of work. But I want to just make sure that I understand that, you know, we're talking about misdemeanors versus felonies, some of it is more concerning than others. And so, yeah, I mean, West Sacramento, I remember when I first moved here, someone said, but what about all the gangs? And I have not had that experience here in West Sacramento, and there's no amount of talking that, or maybe there is, that helps, you know, cleanse someone of that stigma and that perception. But this is, you know, a document that we're using to educate our public, and the public's using to educate themselves. And frankly, we have Walmart in our community, and oftentimes, that can really skew the theft and/or, in some cases, violent crime, if we're considering them with the robberies. And frankly, I think we should reflect, you know, what that is.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, we spend a significant amount of time, you know, really distilling all these details out. We do so on a monthly, or excuse me, weekly basis, as all of you know. We conduct CompStat basically every Tuesday, 2:00, and we just sift through everything and really try to discern what exactly is going on in each of these circumstances. You could argue that, for instance, the burglaries, if you, basically, if you look at commercial burglaries, it's probably pretty straightforward. But if you look at regular burglaries, residential burglaries, rather, you could be looking at them, and some of them are hot prowls, but by that, that means that they're literally breaking in when people are physically in the house. On the other hand, many of them, and quite frankly, most of them, are when people are away. It's still considered burglary, but it looks, you know, it looks remarkable, remarkable, and it is, if it's your house or if it's my house. But that said, it's not the same as if someone was physically there. We also look at the differences in crimes. You'll see sometimes we'll have an X percentage of increase by percentage, and it seems shocking in many cases, because the size of our town, the actual incidences are rather low. And so we try to just sort that out. But it's a matter of really trying to, particularly for this report, how do we synthesize it down into something that's manageable and consumable and understandable? And it's always a work in progress. You know, I talk with my statistician, our crime analyst, on a regular basis. You know, she just rolls her head back every time I come walking up to her, because I have another way, I want to split it out. But points taken.
I appreciate your hard work on this, by the way. And again, I need to reiterate all the hard work that went into this and all the attention to other things that you included in here. So I'm not trying to create more work, I'm just trying to find the tool that would effectively make me a better leader when I'm speaking to members of the community about how great our public safety is in West Sacramento.
Yeah, we'll continue to break it down as much as we can, particularly what we do, or what we have been doing, is focusing on the areas of increases, and then try to sort that out, and so we can explain it. And so it's always looking for the appropriate balance.
Thank you.
We'll continue to do so.
Just to follow up, it's great to have a district attorney and a public safety specialist on council, and so I don't know any of these distinctions, but appreciate, really appreciate the nuances that are involved. I mean, this report has a lot of origins to it. And one is the larger 21st Century policing movement. Another is that, you know, your commitment to community-based policing and to a whole range of strategies as well. And a third was, you know, has been the issues that surrounded, you know, the gang injunction and questions around racial justice in policing and all of that. And so this report is intended to be a reflection on all of those things, but it's also, as part of that, it is, it's the key point for the council and for the community to sort of hold ourselves accountable, you know, including the department, but also all of us, in terms of how are we doing and what are trends that we should be aware of? And, you know, this is the key moment when we are sort of diagnosing, you know, are there issues around, you know, racial bias and that sort of thing that are showing through some of these actions? So it's a really important report and one that we take really seriously here in terms of evaluating in a clear-eyed way. So I really appreciate, you know, getting it better and better and better and the amount of work that's gone into it as well. Also, I still struggle with sort of how to consume it sometimes, because, you know, I'm kind of like any other human being, I'm eyeballing the things, oh, that's gone up 8% and this one's only gone up 3%. Eight's bigger than three, that must be important, or maybe it's not. And the narrative that accompanies it is usually kind of in the same place. It's kind of, it feels like it's doing the same thing. And I just, I wonder whether there are better analytics out there or AI platforms or, you know, something that, you know, where we might agree on a set of algorithms or a set of data analytics standards that would look at, that could look at, that could consume much more data than just the last three quarters, for example, and then have that flagged for you and for us in these reports. And maybe that already happens for you in CompStat, internals of the department, but flagged for us to say, here is, here are the three important things, or three things that, to pay attention, they might be important in the future, so here's one to pay attention to, you know, going forward. But so that there are more decision rules around this that are, you know, based on data science, as opposed to us trying to just eyeball it and figure out what might be important or not. Because I look at it like, I have questions about that, but it's only, it's a small amount of data, and, you know, I could ask, depending on how detailed you got, you could ask questions about every single chart. And I don't want to do that, but I also don't want to then, on the other hand, say, well, it's just, you know, it's just, there's a lot here, and it's not like, you know, shootings have gone up by 100%, therefore, I'm not going to ask any questions. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to find, in the same way that the mayor, I'm describing, trying to find the right way to provide useful accountability through this process for the work that we're doing. So I would, if you haven't already, would encourage you to think about and maybe work with the deputy city manager on ways that we might think about the data, the data analytics and quantitative analysis system that could account for a larger set of data in a more, you know, non-human way, essentially, you know, more in a machine learning way.
I'm certainly looking forward to that, particularly as it relates to racial bias, profiling, that type of thing. Our data sets right now are very limited, and so it's difficult for us to really extrapolate much out of it right now, and we've articulated and reported on our progress, or arguably lack thereof in many cases in that regard, not for lack of effort, but nevertheless. When it comes to crime, that's, to your point, we look at, you know, we're looking at it from all these different directions, you know, really patterns over years, patterns over months, patterns over the last week, trending up and down. I mean, for instance, as of Tuesday, our crime has been trending down for the last five weeks with a slight uptick this last week, and we can go through this. It becomes a matter of, I don't know, I almost get overwhelmed by the data myself, and yet we look at it every single day, certainly with focus once a week. So how do we sort that out and really come up and say, this is the area that we think is of concern? I'm caught a little bit by, you know, if I were to try to break that out and then present it as such, then am I not basically filtering? And so I want to make sure that I'm giving you everything, and if there's areas of focus or significance, then we could focus in that area. But again, I want to make sure that I'm not filtering it, you know, not necessarily intentionally. I can tell you that it wouldn't be intentionally, but I don't know, I just want to be careful.
Yeah, so I think, this is actually, is exactly my hope and my direction in this line of comments, too, is trying to find, so if, you know, if by looking at our data, and the racial data is harder, because we don't have much of it, but we have, the other data we have over a fair, you know, fairly long period of time, other departments in the region and in the country have data, too. So if you could establish that among the whole population of police departments, either in the region or of cities like us in the country or whatever, here's the, you know, here's the standard deviation around some of these numbers in the population. So then we can look at ours and say, okay, are we, you know, how close are, maybe you can tell I started as a professor this week, but we could tell, you know, so we could tell is, from a, you know, objectively, objectively perspective, is this a blip? It doesn't mean there's a problem, it just means, look there, you know, just look at that for a second. And that way, you're not having, you're not relying on any human being to do the eyeball filtering. And so I'm, there's no, I don't have an answer, you know, exactly how to do it, I'm just, I would just think, you know, clearly you've been thinking about it, I would, you know, think, continue to look for opportunities to find some of those statistical algorithms and bases in which you could automate that for us. Obviously, the real-time data, you and our officers and our team has to live with, you know, in the moment and make a lot of judgments about. But for the policy-level piece, I think having the statistical activity as that first filter would be helpful, both for us but also for you. Concur. Councilmember Guerrero?
I just have a couple of questions. You know, when I was reviewing the report and looking at why we are receiving this report, it seemed to me it was following, you know, conforming with law. And so there was, you know, just a standard that we were meeting and receiving the report in compliance with that. But it seems like, you know, there's more room, you know, to improve on that, which is good. And just doing a write-along, I did observe how there's a transition period and a good knowledge base among the police officers as to what's going on out there, and including even in the presentations in your Coffee with the Cop, your description of how you allocate resources based on criminal activity. And so I get a sense that you do have the tools and maybe drawing on that so that, you know, putting it on paper, so that we can better understand how those tools are being used out in the community as you are effectively addressing criminal activity in a way that we can help articulate that.
In fact, this particular report, but for our reporting for the Uniform Crime Report, which is basically what we report on as far as crime numbers, that's a mandate. Nothing else, at least at this point, is actually a mandate. Everything else is really something that we are doing in cooperation with council for that purpose of not just transparency, you know, yes, transparency, but communication, understanding, so you understand what we're doing and our needs and all that other kind of stuff. To that point, though, you know, we do look at this data, and we look at it, you know, so intensely, you know, that quite frankly, we need to be careful that we're not, you know, almost, what am I trying to say? To some extent, we can almost overanalyze this, but what I want to look for is patterns and things like that, that we can actually extrapolate out and are functional and are working. But to, you know, the Racial Profiling Act, we're due to be doing mandatory reporting as of 2023. We're well ahead of that at this point right now, even as much as this frustrates myself, my partner, you know, these are our best attempts, at least at this point, given our ability to collect that data.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, and thank you, Chief, for being here. And we do, I look forward to this as well. And just to kind of, the backstory, when we started this, we started this a few years ago, just as an ad hoc committee, kind of to get it to this point, so that we felt confident that we're getting the data and you're providing it. And so this has been the result of that work, and we're, I'm glad we're always refining it. And I agree, Mayor, in terms of your observation that maybe we should maybe take another look, find another way to look at it to kind of pull out or extrapolate data or trends through a different lens or a different eye or algorithm. I would just caution that, to your point, as I get filtered or, you know, to make sure it's pointing to something. So if we were to do that, I'd encourage us to maybe get another ad hoc committee to do that jointly, because this is our report, right? We hold each other accountable, or we have transparency, and then that was the spirit that this was born. And so kudos again for bringing it to us. And, you know, it does help to get a longer view of it, because there are blips like last week. And on that note, I know we talked earlier, or last week, earlier in the week, if anyone, but I know the force, the police force, had a tough week last week with a couple of blips that showed up. And so just thanking everybody for their work and hoping everybody made that through okay. And I know there's ongoing investigations on that, but those are, we all know you guys as humans dealing with these things, and two events within the two days was pretty tough. So thank you for your service on that, and thanks again for the report.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Proton Morosco?
Thank you. I left something out. I wanted to also commend you and your department, for our department, for the portion that addressed the West Capitol Avenue, Active and Secure, specifically the mention of the senior lead officer on West Capitol Avenue, who's working with our district attorney's office, to help educate our motel owners about detecting human trafficking victims and defendants. As a sex assault prosecutor and a person who's prosecuted dozens of human trafficking cases, I saw a continuum of change, where back when you think of prostitution in the old ways, it's somebody walking a strip, and, you know, it's maybe a thumb out or whatnot. But now it's online, and it's a lot harder to detect. And in order to stop this problem, we have to work in conjunction with business owners and educating our community about what it is that we can do in order to detect and help our law enforcement officers get to the bottom of this. I'm wondering, are there any penalties for, I mean, I imagine there's not, but I mean, if there are any being anticipated for any of the motel owners that may allow nuisances and these things under their nose to occur?
We continue, first thing, you're talking about Officer Jason Mahaffey, so I want to make sure that I highlight him. He's doing remarkable job.
And I've worked with Officer Mahaffey back from the Sacramento District Attorney's Office many years ago, so, and I'm familiar with his work, and he is fabulous.
It's an ongoing process with all of West Capitol, particularly, and that particular area, the, you know, our motels, working with them for standardization or raising their standards of, you know, just occupancy, you know, the way in which they conduct their businesses and the process of doing that. Yes, we're absolutely aggressively going after everything from human trafficking to, quite frankly, just any kind of crimes that are in that particular, you know, that are conducted in that area. So what are the types of penalties? It depends on what we're talking about. I mean, for instance, they have to maintain, you know, specific code, you know, standards, and if they don't, then there's some sanctions accordingly for that. From a criminal aspect, we just do investigations as typical and see if we can pursue that aggressively. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I can connect with you outside this forum. I'm interested in finding out if we've had reports of trafficking and keeping track of that so that we could try to coordinate.
Yeah, once described as a victimless crime, we know that not to be the case. But certainly, human trafficking, you know, we have had incidences that have touched our city, there's no doubt about that. Over the years, that's been something that has reoccurred.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
All right, item four, I'm sorry, item seven is consideration of a contract award to ARC Strategies for State Government Relations and Legislative Advocacy Services. Councilmember Guerrero.
Hi. Thank you very much for stepping up and answering a few questions here that I have. So this contract is being awarded, but I understand there were, there were no other respondents for the RFP at this point.
That's correct.
And I see that it's awarded for a long, you know, so two years and it could go for two, two-year extensions.
Correct.
So it's a period of like possibly six years.
Up to that much, yeah.
Up to that much. And can you give me a little bit more history? I read the history on the achievements and the last I heard as far as what was done was 2016. The most recent achievements since this is a firm that has been working with West Sacramento for a while?
I might need to call a lifeline on that.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Doug Drose, Program Manager for Government Affairs. John Robinson had stepped up because he has a little bit more of the historical knowledge here. More recently, ARC Strategies has just been providing consultation services for me based upon a request that I have about information on individual bills. The highlighted achievement portion were instances that I could point to where the city has been proactive in trying to affect legislation or sponsor legislation. So I can't point to any specific achievements since I've started, but they have been a day-to-day resource for me.
Okay, thank you. I noticed on the website that lobbyists will post what activity they are doing, what, you know, lobbying activity. And there were two bills listed on behalf of the city, SB 5 and SB 128. And do we have a position on those bills? Does the city have an official position on those bills?
No. No, the city does not.
Okay. And so what, what capacity, what was the work involved with the city? I know we have been working through an association on that, through an association, but not working independent.
So you're referring to the what website? I'm sorry?
There was, I think there was Cal.
Doug, I can jump in here. So I think, I think it was the Secretary of State filing website. And we don't get those reports. That's a lobbyist-originated report. I think there, on that particular instance, you're referring to SB 5 and SB 128, which are both EIFD-related bills. Personally, as a representative of the California Association for Local Economic Development, the League of Cities, I provided testimony on both of those bills. Could have just been a matter of confusion that the city was on record and lobbying activities were occurring on our behalf. But again, we don't get those reports. I can tell you though, that ARC Strategies has been involved on a general level of keeping us informed on bills like those that have to do with city priorities like EIFDs. But can't really speak to why those reports were the way they were. So I think that's something we can address with, clarify with the lobbyists.
That would be good to have that clarification with FPPC because it does show on the record that we, you know, we're doing something through this lobbyist and we're not able to answer that question tonight specifically as to what she's doing on our behalf on these issues.
Well, I think we can. She is informing us generally about issues related to those bills. Now, whether or not we took a position on them, that's not part of that report. So what I can answer is why, you know, lobbyists report certain things. But there is ongoing activity through information and communication about issues that are relevant to that topic between us and ARC Strategies.
And on SB 128, there was a bill and then it was a gut and amend. And there was also, I recall, you know, in past council meetings, conversation about passage of it through the budget. What exactly happened?
The best of my knowledge, and this is what I could glean through CALID, was to sponsor that bill before it was amended. It was part of the governor's original trailer bill package. There are, for reasons we're not quite clear on, it didn't make it into the final budget adoption. We were told that there was some reluctance at the legislative, legislative staff level to not have, you know, policy be dictated through the budget. But bottom line is, it isn't part of the budget trailer bill. Senator Bell had repurposed the bill in the meantime. We will be back, as an organization, I'm speaking on, in terms of CALID, and the city will likely be, will be recommending a support position next time it comes around. But it's not something that's been put aside completely. It'll be, it'll be back next session.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. So looking at deliverables and what we, you know, what has been accomplished and what we wanted to achieve in this last, you know, budget and the bill being a gut and amend and that being on her list or the specific lobbyist list with the firm, I'd like to take a look at a process maybe as a one-year probationary period, just to see if this is the firm we want to continue to go with as opposed to a six-year period. And maybe exploring where we are at that point in time. I think it'd be, you know, helpful to see if there, you know, the relationships are important. There's a lot of lobbyists out there that have great relationships. Her history is excellent with the league, you know, as far as that particular contracted lobbyist we've been working with, working as a past League of Cities lobbyist and her experience. And the firm's experience is also very good too with the relationships. But if we could take a look at, you know, maybe a one-year contract and then, and it mainly is also because there were no other applicants to the RFP, no responses. And so I have concerns over that as well. I'd like to see this embedded in a way that we have more, you know, people apply for this RFP, but it just didn't seem to happen for some reason. And, you know, and maybe it wasn't advertised. I didn't see it on the Capitol Morning Report where some, you know, where it could be advertised there or any other locations where it could have been robustly advertised to demonstrate that we were seriously looking at all, you know, interested parties out there that were willing to, you know, lobby on West Sacramento's behalf.
If I could, a couple of things. So one, the term of the contract is by mutual extension only. So it's a two-year contract with two mutual options to extend. There's also section four, a very flexible termination clause. There's a 30-day termination by either party given written notice. So I think, I hear the point. I think what we can do is take the next two years and assess it. And in the meantime, if we have any reason to be looking elsewhere, we have that termination clause available to us at any time.
That would be great. I also would like to ask for deliverables, you know, as contracted lobbyists, either a monthly report, weekly, I, you know, I, it's my, it's my field. So a weekly report, providing, you know, gubernatorial appointments, background information that we can have, just so we're knowledgeable. There's a lot of transition going on with this administration, new appointments being made. Also, you know, just what are the hot topics going on in the legislature that provide us with information so that it'll give us insight, you know, knowledge as to what's going on in the legislature. Just information that'll help you, and I know you're consulting, but not just expecting to ask, but, you know, something that you receive on a weekly basis. So you're familiar. There's a lot happening from week to week in the legislature and in the administration.
Happy to discuss that with.
I'm supportive of the, of the proposed contract as it is. And this is also my field, having run government relations for the largest system of higher education in the world, in Sacramento as well. And, and have worked with this firm through the city for, since the time that we contracted with them. And we've had prior firms before. And this is the, the community of municipal lobbyists in, in the Capitol is, they all know each other. And I think the reason why there were no other bidders is that it's pretty well-known in the Capitol that we have a very, for our size and for our wealth and for the fact that we don't, the speaker doesn't come from here, that we have an outsized influence in the Capitol. So the other lobbyists, other municipal lobbyists in the Capitol, I think for the, for the most part, of course, realize why West Sacramento wouldn't, wouldn't change because we have had extraordinary influence on, with this firm and things like the carve-out and the Delta Act to make sure that our land use authority wasn't trampled by the Delta Stewardship Council, the whole set, all the laws that created the EIFDs for which we are the first one in the state and all the changes that were made by the governor and by the Senate just for us through that process. And then every, every, it's all the issues that we're taking up at a time, at any one moment, have state implications. So we're not a typical public agency or nonprofit organization that starts the year with, here are our five bill proposals. And we want a lobbyist to advance these five bills. That's not typically what our needs are. Our needs tend to come up in issues, our issues as they're happening during the year. And it might be that we run into a problem with the EIFD piece and we're scoping, maybe we want to get in a piece of legislation. Usually it's not something we're sponsoring, but can we get in somebody else's legislation? Can we change the regulation? Can we get an interpretation from the governor's office that's different? Can we get them a meeting with folks in order to get heard on the topic? Often, maybe most of the time, those don't translate into a formal letter, letter of support or opposition. And so it can't come back to us as a sort of report on deliverables like it would if we were Planned Parenthood or the tobacco industry or Los Angeles County. It's just a different kind of relationship that we have. And so it's largely on a as-we-need-it basis. So it may be that in the last couple of months, you haven't had as much of these current, but there are definitely issues coming up that are, that are key in governance issues, no place like home issues that we will want to be weighing in on. And often we're able to solve them without having to go directly to sponsoring a piece of legislation ourselves. This is not the firm I would hire to do the sort of lobbyist 101 work of giving a weekly update. I mean, if we need that, there are much cheaper ways of getting something like that, like subscribing to Rough and Tumble or to Cal Matters or some other, some other thing than paying for a lobbyist to spend time providing that information. Personally, I don't need it if our staff team feels that that's necessary to them. But that's never been our, we're not, we don't write campaign contribution checks. We don't go in, in the Capitol and meet with legislators all across the board. We're not, we don't lobby that way. And so I'm not, I'm not convinced we need that as a council. But if we do, I wouldn't, I definitely would not spend, I wouldn't hire a lobbyist to do the work that could be done kind of at, for a much deeper rate by some other entity in this case. And frankly, I don't, I mean, we already know this stuff, but both from you and your, and your capacity as a lobbyist for LA County, myself and others on the council and certainly on our staff team as well, that are, that are connected with what's, with what's going on. But we have been remarkably successful with this firm. And I think a two-year contract is, you know, our waste contract's a decade, a two-year contract's absolutely appropriate given the fact that we've had this relationship for a decade. We've had remarkable results and we haven't had any other, any other bidders and having gone out to the open process. This is not, I mean, these are, it's well-known in the Capitol when these are, when these are put out there. And we are, we are a high-value marquee client for folks, but they didn't apply because I think they all looked at and said, there's no way that they would switch because they are, they are, they are supernaturally successful already in the Capitol. So they're, it's not that no one else is going to be able to do this. So I'm supportive of going forward as it is. We have the opportunity in two years to make that decision as a council. It's not something that the city manager can just sign on his own, he'd have to bring, they'd have to bring it back in order to, to proceed in that direction. But I think it's, it's the appropriate path to move forward. So I'm supportive of it.
And I would be willing to support. I think that they've been doing a good job and, but I would also like to see more, you know, a larger pool of applicants. And the next time, you know, do, you know, more to vet this out there. I mean, you know, maybe we are going to conclude with the same person, but just see a larger pool of applicants so that, you know, it demonstrates that that's the individual or firm we decide with.
Can you understand, did we do a request for proposals out there and invited people to apply?
Yes, that's correct.
They just didn't apply?
Yeah. We did not, you know, advertise in any sort of publications. What I did do is I targeted 10 firms, including the firm that applied, all of which have experience representing local governments. None of them responded. After the response period had ended, I did reach out to several of those firms, got in touch with a couple of them as to, you know, why, why not? We were looking to have a very competitive situation. The explanation that the mayor got was the response, or the explanation that the mayor just gave was the response that I got from those firms that did not reply. Essentially, if they had not heard that there were any major issues between us and the provider, they, from a business perspective, it didn't make sense for them to spend their time responding to something. And that, that respect is the response that I, I got from them. I, of course, told them that we're always looking for a competitive environment in these sorts of procurements, so.
So we did our part. That's on them if they didn't apply.
I, yes.
And I've met with Amy Brown and Dominic Damari on several occasions regarding city business. I found them to be extremely informed, very committed to the job and committed to the city and very fantastic advocates for our position. So I actually support this item as well. Thank you.
All right. I think one of the things I like about this firm is that we're kind of high maintenance in a way. I mean, we're, we don't require a lot in terms of like, you know, do a bill and all, you know, all the traditional lobbying things. But when we need something, we usually need it by Thursday and we need all the laws to change and we need the Department of Finance to change its ruling. I mean, and we, and we really need it because we're going to deliver a project or we have a grant that's going to expire if they, we don't get a thing. So, and a lot of the municipal lobbying firms, and you know some of them, and we've had some of them in the past, that's not their thing. They like look for, they try to be the firm that represents the cities that have a lot of sales tax revenue. And all they really do is come to the Capitol and try to make sure that the legislature doesn't steal sales tax revenue from cities. And we used to be, you know, we used to be in one of those coalitions. Or, or they, they focus on cities that are trying to, you know, stop RENA allocations or whatever. But they, but they are able to, they, they make their money by just like focusing on one coalition and we're just too complicated for a lot of that in a lot of ways. So I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, at the beginning, this was not, this firm was not my first choice when we chose them in 2009. But I think they've, they've been, they've been very well adapted to our specific needs and way, way of doing business and the kinds of things that we need from the legislature. So I think the two years makes, makes sense. But, okay. All right. Thank you. Item, item nine Ben is up next, and we have a request for public comment on item nine. That's consideration of the terms of agreement and adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the city and West Sacramento Firefighters Association, Local 522, and adoption of Budget Adjustment Resolution 19-87. We have a request for public comment by Pat Flint.
Thank you. I urge you to adopt this agreement this evening and I want to thank the city and the firefighters union for coming to a settlement that I hope the firefighters are happy with. And let's hope that they, that the police and the fire can now go on and add new employees. If they can't do it with this contract, then I hope you add money in the budget so that we can come up to our growth patterns with the police and the fire department because this week's proven that we need more of both. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I also want to, just on, on the next item for item 10, which is just for the record, it's consideration of the terms of agreement and adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Stationary Engineering Association, Local 39, and adoption of a budget resolution, Budget Adjustment Resolution 19-88. Also just to, to, to thank both Local 522 and Local 39 for, for the success, the conclusion of a successful round of negotiations in a speedy and speedy way that I think both advances our commitment as a council, but certainly as an entire community to, to our, to our employees in every department, to competitiveness, to the diversity of our, of our workforce and to the quality of service that our, that our citizens, our citizens receive. And to, to, to thank both of them. This is, this, none of these are ever easy, are easy or simple. But these were among the easiest and the simplest. And I think that both, everyone came to the table in good faith. The economy is better than it was a year and a half ago, so that never hurts. But these represent a very solid step forward. And I know on behalf of the council, I want to thank our parties in both of these, both of these units and to thank the members in, in all the city departments because these are, you know, every one of the city's employees is essential to the work that we do. Even if you, all you see is the code enforcement officer or maybe you come to the desk and you just see the planner or you just see the firefighter or you just see the parks maintenance worker, there's a whole organization behind them. And, you know, if they don't, if they don't get their payroll check because human resources didn't get that, you know, their staff have gone out on strike, you don't, you don't, yeah, those services don't get delivered either. It's the entire team that makes the city have, function and protects public safety and advances our public services. So thanks to, to folks in both 522 and Local 39 and to the units that we've already dealt with in the previous weeks for, for their collaborative negotiations.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
All right. So the motion is on the consent agenda minus item three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero. It's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero, seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to item 12, which is a workshop on a policy for establishing the city's position on the legislative or policy actions of other jurisdictions. Mr. Droz.
I'm back. Good evening. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to provide a workshop format for the council to give direction and feedback on a policy to guide the taking of official city positions on legislative or policy actions of other jurisdictions. This was one of my initial directives when I started in this role, to formulate a policy around these issues. We see the development of this policy as desirable for a couple of reasons. Number one, just having any policy, no matter what it says, in place, we hope will eliminate any gray areas for both the council and the city staff in terms of how we're to interact with other government agencies. And number two, we think that a policy done the right way can increase our agility and effectiveness in conducting our intergovernmental advocacy efforts. It is the result of a pretty long and thoughtful process. I started in April and have been going back and forth on it for a while. We conducted it in cooperation and consultation with our city attorney, as well as our state and federal contract lobbyists. And given the implications of the policy that, the draft policy proposal that is included in this report, the implications in terms of delegating authority to staff, we wanted to bring this in the workshop format. We thought it was absolutely necessary to get council's guidance in shaping this policy. You all have the staff report in front of you, but I will provide a brief summary of the contents. As you can see, we essentially came up with three procedures under this policy. The first of which I would describe as our status quo procedure, wherein staff brings a recommendation for council consideration in terms of taking action on these matters. We see that as being the primary mode of us taking positions for the vast majority of instances, for two reasons. For one, most legislation, we can anticipate, will have some level of controversy. For the purposes of this exercise, we've defined that as having stated or organized opposition to whatever position staff is recommending. Similarly, we can also anticipate the majority of legislation won't have a lot of time pressures associated with it, as many bills at the state and federal level work through a year-long, sometimes multi-year-long process. However, we did see the need for some flexibility at the staff level to respond quickly to items, so we came up with two other procedures. The first of which, we've called the innocuous bill or policy procedure. This is to deal with items that directly align with the council's adopted policies or strategic plans, and that are either non-fiscal or have no, generated no stated opposition to the staff's recommended position. Under this procedure, the council would delegate authority to the mayor or his designated staff's recommendation to engage in conversation, sign on to coalition letters, or take official city positions if those criteria are met. If action were to be taken under this procedure, we would then provide a report to the council detailing the particular issue and how it falls in line with those criterias. We see this as desirable to have in place, because staff is, from time to time, contacted by legislative staff, other cities, and outside organizations to provide our input on issues that, by any reasonable standard, align pretty clearly with council's previously stated priorities or policies. But our ability to engage on those issues is limited without council direction and action. This can be, you know, providing informal input in the developmental stage of legislation, where coming to council for a specific direction may not really be plausible. In other instances, like signing on the coalition letters, we could lose out on opportunities to sign on if we need to wait, you know, two, three weeks to come to the council for direction on, of course, matters that we have identified as being clearly in line with council priorities. So, we feel that in this regard, delegating some limited authority to staff to operate under these parameters, we can improve our ability to respond quickly while still maintaining a direct reporting relationship to the council and strict adherence to council-adopted policies and priorities. Finally, third procedure we're proposing under this policy is called the urgency procedure. This is the one that we would anticipate using the least, but in practice, potentially offering us the greatest improvement over our current operating structure. Essentially, this is meant to address the legislature's propensity to take last-minute changes to bills and/or the budget. There is the 72-hour imprint rule now, but that still does not really afford cities like ours time to react to those changes that may affect us. So, we're proposing that the mayor be delegated authority at staff recommendation to take official city positions within 21 days of either the budget deadline or the deadline for either house to pass bills. If action were to be taken under this procedure, what we're proposing is that there would be another failsafe to guarantee council oversight, wherein the city manager would provide written notice to the full council and provide a 24-hour window, after which for any individual council member to object to that proposal in which we would not take action. We chose that 21-day timeframe, because anything less would really hamper our ability to come to council, and happy to go through the calendar if there's any questions about that. So, that's really a summary of the policy. One thing that is not included in the staff report that I did want to make sure I mentioned was that I did look at how other cities handle these types of issues, including direct conversations with my counterparts at the cities of Sacramento and Roseville. Generally, it seems like most cities, and I've also looked at the League of Cities, has a database that's very handy for these things, of how other cities handle these issues. Generally, it appears that most city staffs will bring a legislative platform for their council's consideration on a yearly basis, and then they're delegated authority to act under the parameters of those platforms, take positions, influence legislation, and so on. In my evaluation, those platforms tend to be quite broad in general in nature. You'll see language in a lot of them, like oppose legislation that erodes local control, or support legislation that encourages financial stability. Those are open to interpretation, I would say. And so, that may be very well, and that's why we're bringing this as a workshop, as something that the council wants to consider. However, we thought we'd start with a little more restrictive approach at this point in the discussion. In terms of next steps, I'd really like to bring a final policy for consideration at the next council meeting. If council deems it appropriate to approve at that time, it would be very helpful to have something in place for the last weakest session, just in case. That concludes my presentation. Look forward any direction, and can answer any questions.
All right. Let me lead off, because this policy delegates authority to the mayor, which may be an uncomfortable subject, but it's especially uncomfortable for me, so I'd like to give some comments and feedback about the proposal. First, I think, thanks for bringing this forward. It is very necessary. I actually thought we had such a policy already in general terms, but that's maybe because at Secog, we've adopted basically this same policy 17 times. You know, every time that there's something controversial, we go back and look at the policy. But we always come back to basically this essential structure. So, I think it's the right approach. We do have to be nimble, and our issues, like we were talking about in the prior item, tend not to be those kinds of, like what Burlingame's issues are, which is, don't, you know, legislature, please never make us build affordable housing, and don't take our tax money away, and, you know, all the, so their platforms tend to be pure defense, and we are almost always trying to take advantage of something, or get some money, or get an exemption in order to do something cool in the city. And so, it's hard to anticipate, hard to anticipate those sorts of things at the beginning of the year. So, the platform approach works as well for us. And I think, as you say, in a lot of those cities, it doesn't really work either, because it becomes a blank check for the staff and for the mayor in those cities to essentially do whatever they choose. So, you've really just delegated, you know, unlimited authority in that stage. But getting this right, I think, is important, while also recognizing that it is, like the delegation that we give to the city manager for a variety of things, you know, approvals and that sort of thing, it has to come back frequently. So, one suggestion I would have is that, you know, we schedule in this policy that the authority gets confirmed, you know, once each, once each, you know, council cycle. So, maybe that's every two years. But just that there's a check-in point where the council sees, yeah, this is, we, you know, now that we know who's around the table, and, you know, because there's our offices, and there's also us as a group of people. And the council has to say, you know, kind of look at the center of the table, say, "Okay, yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'm willing to live with that for the next two years, based on who's here." So, I would encourage you to think about some sort of, you know, every-two-year reauthorization provision in that piece. It is, it's, where it says staff, I would also, I also think it should specifically refer to the city manager, that these are authorities that ought to rise to that level. Because the other part of what's happened, what is being determined in here is, what's the, what are we doing about it? Like, okay, you mentioned, we might send a letter, join a coalition, show up and testify. I mean, there's different ranges of workload and resources that might be devoted to these things, and it is at the manager level to determine whether or not it's worth doing that, as well as being the manager. It should be at the manager level that things like determining that it's consistent with council policy, which is specific and vague at the same time. And the manager is the one person, is the one person to whom, that is accountable to the council for, in this case, his, you know, his making those judgments correctly. So, where it says staff, I think it should instead say, directly say, the city manager. The, and then the, you know, there are, you know, brand act reason, what have you, not to create a council subcommittee and that sort of thing. I've thought about that, you know, in the past as a way of dealing with these issues. But if the subcommittee is empowered to take positions, then it's no longer advisory, and so there's a whole set of reasons why that approach doesn't work. But I wonder whether, at least under the urgency procedure, maybe under both, but under, at least under the urgency procedure, you know, a, either a requirement, or maybe just an exhortation, that the mayor should, where, you know, where there is a council member whose assignment, you know, whose assignments, for example, on the first page, match up with that policy area, that the mayor, you know, shall endeavor, shall, you know, seek to consult with that, you know, with one council member. So, there's, if there's a transportation issue that's up, and we have, you know, on our, it could be that there's more than one on the council, so the mayor would have to pick the one. But in that case, you know, the expectation would be that there would be a check-in with that one member, in this case, it would be Councilmember Ledesma, before making the judgment on an urgency, one for which there isn't necessarily clear policy involved. So, that might be one way to provide one check, because even though the timeline's fast in those, it's not so quickly that you couldn't consult with one, with one person. So, that, I would kind of put that on the table as one way to try to distribute a little bit more of what's happening here, to include a broader range of the council. And then the last set of comments I had on it was in the criteria for the, well, the innocuous legislation. I can't stand that name. I would not want to be the author of an innocuous bill, but.
We'll come up with something better.
Yeah, so I'm not even sure what, it's innocuous, as to even why it's called that. But for that, from that section, I feel like you've solved the same problem too many times, which is, you know, you've created too many filters here, as like, we can only do this when it makes no difference whatsoever in the world that we actually do it. So, if a bill has no fiscal impact at all, as Councilmember Guerrero could also tell you, then that's a very small proportion of the total number of bills, and it's a really small proportion of those total bills that do anything. Because non-fiscal isn't just mean it doesn't spend any money. It, you know, it means it didn't go to appropriation, so it's not, I mean, there's like, it doesn't require anybody to do anything that's all that serious in most cases, especially when it comes to cities. Non-fiscal bills that confer civil rights might be, you know, are important, but non-fiscal bills that deal with local government are less likely to be actually consequential. So, that's a pretty, that's a, you've narrowed the field pretty, a lot at that point. And bills that don't have any opposition, or if we're opposed, they don't have any support. If we're opposed, it's almost certain that a legislator that's introduced a bill has at least someone in support of a bill. Virtually, it's hard to imagine any legislator that's introducing legislation that can't at least manufacture a single, you know, support item on it. So, that seems very, that's, it feels like it's, like you've eliminated virtually everything between those two provisions. And if C, which is that the proposed position is consistent with existing council-approved policy direction, I don't know why that's even, why these other filters are all that necessary. You know, if we have a policy here that we, you know, we need the law to allow us, you know, that we intend to issue bonds for the infrastructure financing district, and we need the law to, in order to make that occur, and SB 128 is critical for that occurring, then I'm not sure why we would tie our hands behind our back to say, "But we can only do that if nobody's opposed to it." Well, if nobody's opposed to it, then it's really not necessary for us to weigh in at all. So, I'm just, I'm not sure, it feels like it's too many, you know, too many locks are put on this, and you end up with something that can't be used in any situation where it would actually be useful. And I feel like D, the reasonable person standard is kind of in the same place. Whereas, if you were to strip B and D out of the policy, so it's just, you know, things that are consistent with council policy, that, you know, that both the city manager and the mayor, and, you know, where there's this consultation mechanism as well happens, that's where you move. And then it's the council's determination afterwards to say, "Hey, city manager and mayor, you got the totally wrong. And you know what? You got the one two weeks ago totally wrong, too. We're not doing this policy anymore." That, to me, that's the most effective way to guide this, rather than straightjacket you when the whole purpose that you described for doing this was to allow us to nimbly respond in the best interest of the city and the Capitol. So, I think it's the right idea. I just, I wonder whether or not you've over, you've put too many safety locks on it, so to a point where you just couldn't actually use it for anything that you would care about. Councilmember Guerrero.
I think that goes back to why there is a, like a platform. It gives you, you know, the decision process of, and it eliminates all of trying to kind of figure it out and analyze, does this bill do that or this? I think if you just have a bill that says, "We need more funding for transportation needs," or, you know, enhance mobility, then you can go out and support that bill immediately, or you can support that funding initiative. So, it's a budget, and, you know, bill, you know, nowadays, it's both budget and bills, you know, as it's going, and it'd be good to have the flexibility to do both, and then it's off your list of things to do after June. But I think that explains why, you know, for me, in my experience, having the knowledge as to, like, this is an area, you know, EIFD, this is an area we want to support, and that is going to have opposition. But you know what? We already know that, and we're going to move forward, or a position we've had in the past, and just going on ahead and moving forward. We've had a support position on this item, or an opposed position on this item, and city council's already made a decision, and we want to continue it, because, like, we have a bill that, you know, SB 266. So, you know, that is probably going to come again if the governor vetoes it. So, you want to go ahead and have, you know, an opposed position again, instead of bringing it back to council. So, those are going to be some ideas that, you know, you want to have in advance. I'm also thinking of sponsorship ideas that, you know, we could co-sponsor, so then we're on record early on, and looking at sponsorship ideas, so that we can pursue this through the administration first, and get some buy-in, and work collaboratively with the administration. It could be levy protection funds, it could be all sorts of ideas. And then, it also gives you an opportunity to shop for an author early in the year, so that we can work and lay the groundwork immediately. So, there's the idea of sponsorship, and working, I think, also with the administration on some suggestions, just vetting, you know, you have a strategic planning retreat or some retreat, just asking a little, you know, bullet there, you know, does anybody have any legislative ideas? Because I understand, like, you know, Denix, for example, goes to the regional water authority, and there's legislative updates that are going on, he can bring it back, and he can say, "This is a position we should take, and support this." But I think at that point, we've already had a position or some idea of where we're at. But that's where the policy, you know, platform helps you, instead of having to go through all of this and figure it all out. It's just, it's a harder approach, and I agree with the mayor on that. So, it just makes it simpler. And I do like the idea of having a process where you have, you know, some authority to move forward in establishing a position, and then informing us after. And if we have a concern, or an idea, or, you know, strategic ideas on how we can all, you know, contribute to, you know, make it happen one way or the other, you know, we'll continue to consult with you on that. But in addition to that, providing, you know, just an update or two, so we know what happens during the course of the year, and, you know, wherever we can weigh in and provide support. So, just an occasional memo, the, you know, it passed the floor, it's on, you know, from one house to the next, or it was approved in the budget, once the budget was signed. You know, these are the things, and checking off what we actually took positions on and the outcome of that. So, those are just a few ideas that I had.
Okay. Councilmember. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And thank you, Doug, for bringing this up. I do think this is necessary. I have a, I don’t have the rich experience that my colleagues to my right and left have in the state Capitol. And, and, but have been here for eight, nine years now, and seen the city be especially or particularly effective in welding influence and getting outcomes that make our city move forward. And things like the EIFD, or the work we did in post redevelopment, work with, not always successful. We move the needle some to get things in our way, and so on. We’ve been terribly effective in a, in a, in a manner that befits our small-city get-it-done attitude, which is, you know, we work strategically. I appreciate the previous comment, I was just listening on the previous item about how we are very particular. And I’m just going to say this because this item and the discussion before this sort of just waved a flag for me a little bit around, around, I don’t, what I don’t want us to become is open the door to become an advocacy shop here. I don’t believe that us becoming a, we’re going to have a legislative platform, and we’re, and I think, in our case, less is more. And I worry these discussions in and of themselves are signaling that we’re going to be much more active in the Capitol in sponsoring bills. And again, this, and I know you have specific ideas about this, Councilmember Guerrero, but, but again, I’m just signaling to myself, I’m really being cautious, like, I’m not as, we want to be, at least my view is that we want to be strategic, we want to be nimble, we want to influence and get outcomes that benefit the city, our residents, our progress. And, and so these discussions, while I get it, we need to get down to what the policy is, I also am guarding ourselves, at least for myself, around being overly ambitious in advocacy. And because I think for a long time, at least my experience of, even during Piney Commission days and here, we took a lot of pride in not get, that not elevating ourselves into these kind of statewide issues or national issues, where all of a sudden, we’re supporting every bill, and we bring ideas to that. I don’t, I just, that, that, that’s not what I think about when I think about our advocacy, our, our influence in the Capitol. So again, I’m just kind of guarding this conversation around that notion. I would also say, though, that, that the framework you’ve built, and the mayor has some good ideas, which I agree with, are necessary. Because as being someone that doesn’t work in the Capitol day-to-day and doesn’t have the background of it, its workings, I think, to my benefit are just strange to me. I don’t get it, and there’s a lot of things that happen, a lot of good people are trying to make things happen, and I don’t understand it. And I think, as the city manager told me earlier, that’s probably a good thing for you. But, because you don’t like to see the sausage made. I get, I get a taste of that at the federal level, but, but here it’s just different. And so this is necessary because most of our existence really depends on what happens across the street, across the river. And I think we, we need this because as a council member, sometimes you find yourself behind the conversations. I’m not in the day-to-day Capitol or monitoring the Capitol morning report or whatever to hear what legislation is going. I hear it through colleagues at other meetings on transit issues, I hear it through some of the conversations here. And it’s terribly uncomfortable when you’re caught behind, like, hey, we need to support this. No idea what this is about, tell me what it is. So having this as a safeguard to make sure there’s a check-in, I think, and mayor, I appreciate your, your suggestion on, on sort of a consultation method, is important to us, and to protect council members and future council members who come here without that background. Because there’s nothing worse than a council member is hearing some, hearing about something secondhand that, hey, I saw you supported a resolution, or you guys are supporting this legislation, like, I have no idea what you’re talking about. Or no idea how that impacts me. And I didn’t even get a chance to weigh in, I give my two cents. On an area that I’m working on, you used the idea of the transit mobility issue, yeah, I really want to know about that. And I think it is important that, and I appreciate you also inserting and having this every two years, because if it’s abused, and I get that feeling, I’m likely not going to reauthorize that. So I appreciate you kind of fessing up to that. The other part, too, I appreciate is, because it goes to the first point I was making around, I don’t want to signal a flag that we’re doing this, not just by mere sense of the influence we wield and how we, how we strategically use our influence in the Capitol. I also am concerned about the resource issue. All of a sudden, your job has become very complicated, just sitting here in the last 20 minutes. You’ve got to worry about, you know, our, our strategic plan, finding a nexus on that. There’s 18, maybe or so, priorities up there. In any legislative bill, all of a sudden becomes, could have a nexus to that. And I’m worried about, all of a sudden, you’ve, you know, I find, hey, there’s a bill I’m hearing about in, in the Capitol that’s coming to bear on the transit issue, that’s a priority for us. Can you make a, can you, can you do, you know, I, I, you don’t want me involved in that conversation, and I’m sure the city manager doesn’t want resources burned because I found a nexus, we should back it, when I don’t really have the expertise in that. And, and so I think that’s an area where I think this is, this framework is important to protect you and protect the city staff from, from chasing around a litany of stuff that maybe we want to, we feel like we’re important to us, when maybe, you know, our lobbyists who are weighing this every day would tell us, that’s not an important bill, it’s just more of a, whatever, they would tell us, that you don’t need to get involved, get involved in that fight or that issue. So again, all this is, is important to me. I’m not going to tell you whether the filters, as the mayor pointed out, are too many. I just need to make sure there are filters, I’ll let you kind of workshop, that, because I’m protecting the council members that won’t have this background, to making sure they have a say in, at least in understanding of how this comes back to them. And, and so that there is that check and balance of our, our ability to manage that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, and I’m glad we’re having this conversation. I feel like this policy moves us to a place to be even, even more active advocating for ourselves than, than we have necessarily been, notwithstanding the, the issues of, of getting buried. But I particularly think it’s important because I was trying to think of options to setting a policy like this, and the thing that kept coming to mind is, well, we could meet every week. I mean, that’s only, I, this, this actually gets us around having, having to do that, which would only, really only be for, for that purpose. So I, I feel like it has some safeguards, you put some guardrails that, that make me comfortable. You know, I do think the, the word innocuous, if we could, I don’t have another magic word for you. I was going through the, the examples that you shared with us, and it, you know, it is interesting because something that I, you might think is innocuous for me, when I read budget language allocating funds to support cities in their efforts to address homelessness, that’s consistent with our plan, of course, but if it, if it were telling us to do something in particular, or we got the funding if we did that, I mean, the devil’s in the details in a way. So, but then, of course, we’d have our city manager, mayor, looking at that, and they would know, know those nuances. So I do think this moves us into a direction that we need to have this flexibility, particularly at the, the urgency piece. Because I think having, having the deliberative process, which we do, and we have it for a reason, but it, it slows us down to be able to be nimble. So I think this addresses that.
All right. Well, this is a workshop only. I, I think that it’s been a good, good discussion, a lot of feedback, all of, and I agree 100% of it, even where there’s nuances to, to that. And I do, and I, and I, I want to underscore Mr. Ledesma’s point, because for me, I’m not interested in turning into the 1980s City of Davis, you know, taking a position on every, everything at the UN and, and every piece of legislation. I think we’re, we are more effective because it’s rare that, you know, when, when you see us on, you know, having a position on a bill, people do take notice. Not everybody, but it’s like, well, why, you know, they’ve, they’ve come to this party. And for most things, we don’t need, we don’t need to weigh in. You know, a lot of, a lot of things that we actually have an interest in, well, that’s why we’re in the League. And the League tells everybody in the Capitol, the cities are for it. Most of the 475 cities in the League don’t all send separate letters, and unless we’re trying to influence our legislators on it specifically, they tend not to be that impactful. So we don’t need to replicate all that. And if, you know, if there’s some public works issue, and they’re, you know, and our, our team, as, through their membership in the California Public Works, you know, Society or whatever it is, is weighing in on it, maybe we don’t need to. So I, we don’t need to, like, look for ways to take more positions on bills. I don’t, I don’t think, I, to me, that shouldn’t be the purpose here. But still, but give us, give us the ability to weigh in where, where we need to. This, this seems like an important, an important step forward, so. Do you have, do you, and I, and I do think, a lot of this isn’t coming on the city manager. So the, I mean, I think, you know, a lot of the discussion is, from, from the start, including the way I presented, was like, about what is the role of the mayor in this, and it is, it is not trivial in this policy. But the more important one, because it doesn’t even get to the mayor unless the city manager proposes doing so. So I think it is, it is important that, either in the policy or in our, you know, evaluation and direction to the city manager in, in their review, you know, make it clear that you’re managing, you are managing this process. And the role of the mayor is really to provide the, you know, sort of the last sign-on, as opposed to the mayor as the generator of these, you know, of these positions. The mayor’s not the leader of the legislative program. The mayor’s just performing the, the central function of serving on behalf of the council in these decision points, but it really needs to be generated and therefore managed appropriately based on the kinds of comments that have been said by, all around the table today by the manager.
Thank you for your feedback. We’ll incorporate appropriate changes and bring this back for consideration.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item 13 is a workshop on the Washington District Public Art Implementation Plan, Part One. And Sandin.
Pardon me. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for taking this in as part one. The reason why we’ve decided to break this up is, really, this first part of the document lays the foundation for the second part, and everything that we’re kind of covering in this first part has in some form or another been brought before the council, we feel like, as an interpretation, or we’re implementing existing policy direction. And before we move into the sort of unknown space, we wanted to come in and check and make sure that we’re, we’re getting this right before we bring back the next workshop item, which is the second part, which gets into art concepts that have not been previously discussed, or, and then all of the supporting, like, policies and mechanisms that would support the collection as a, as a whole. So the purpose of tonight is to kind of walk you through that first part and get your feedback on the criteria that is going into the NEA-produced document that is the Washington Art Plan Implementation. So we received a grant in partnership with the City of Sacramento to develop this joint plan, and the purpose of this joint plan is to really talk about how art can bind our two river fronts together, and that it creates this singular experience along the waterfront through public art. And for West Sacramento, what that really means for us in terms of how we’re going to be delivering this NEA grant, is that we want to go back and reinforce what was in Washington Realized, about what place, what placemaking does in Washington Realized, what public art does in terms of, like, circulation, creating identity for the district. And then also, traditionally, the city has dealt with issues along Tower Bridge Gateway in the Washington documents. It’s not been in the Tower Bridge Gateway documents, it’s been in, Tower Bridge Gateways, I mean, the Bridge District documents, excuse me, but it’s been in Washington. Because we understand that what happens along Tower Bridge Gateway really does have a lot of impact in Washington, so we’ve typically dealt with those issues in the Washington documents. So this plan has to be approved by the city council by October 31st, but it will actually be enacted through the Washington-specific plan update. So this isn’t your only bite at the apple, we’re going to be asking you to approve the document, but then we’ll be incorporating those elements into the specific plan. So the policy basis that we received from Washington Realized, which was approved back in 2015, is that public art does three things in the Washington District. It reinforces circulation goals. So we have a, a big component of the sustainable strategy that is Washington Realized, is about creating this transit-oriented development area. And so we said, public art is really important to activate a walkable community, it’s incorporated into that infrastructure to communicate to people where they’re supposed to be going, reconnects them to the riverfront, and helps sort of shape the identity of the district, beyond it being a historic district, but sort of shapes all of the interesting and eclectic things that make Washington the community that it is. And so we started this process and recognized, we kind of had to go through three exercises to really understand what Washington Realized was telling us. It was telling us that there’s these different pieces, there’s these garden streets, and so we said, well, how do we understand what does that mean? And we started off with saying, okay, well, we did great community outreach as part of Washington Realized. So we, building on that, we said, okay, well, we need to then review all the foundational policy documents, expand further on our community outreach, because it was part of the grant, and also we had some very specific issues that we wanted to go out to the public and talk to them about. And then we needed to go do an actual inventory of our existing placemaking features that are in the district, to make sure that we understood what was working well, what could we improve, and then what are we building on so we’re adding to that collection. So the event that we did as our, part of our community outreach was this pop-up event. It happened in August of last year, was really well-attended, and it was a celebration of local makers and food trucks, and we had live music, and we ended up putting in a temporary art installation on the parish garage. And what occurred during that event as part of the community outreach was we conducted a visual survey. Now, prior to the event, the consultant team had sent out a bunch of written surveys to the community, asking them some more basic questions about what they thought public art should do in the district. But this was a really interesting exercise, because what it was trying to do was get the public to understand that public art is a medium beyond what they think of. It’s not a memorial sculpture, or a plaque, or the, you know, just the Washington monument, or, you know, just your typical, sort of like, mural. It’s a variety of different mediums that can communicate a variety of different themes. And we were going out to the public and we’re saying, have you thought of this or that being public art? And we were really trying to get them to understand that public art is a beautiful expression across many mediums, attempting to achieve many objectives. And so we really feel like we achieved that with this survey. We took out nine different examples of sort of modern interpretations of public art. We got a lot of really positive feedback from the public, and we were able to incorporate that feedback into a few key findings that I wanted to share with you. So those findings are as follows. One, it really supported something that we had in Washington Realized, which that these large beacons, or these large pieces that were described in Washington Realized on the Riverwalk are really important, and the people really understood that we needed to create these investments along the Riverwalk. We also heard that there was a lot of support for this wave-finding component, and that we were going to be using art to orient people towards these key important features in the district, or these key gateways that are in the district. So we got a lot of support from the public on that. We also got a lot of support that there’s this understanding that economic, that there’s economic development in public art, that they work together, that you can use them to attract new businesses to the community, or that you get residents who never thought they were going to live in Washington to come and see this art, and really start to begin to appreciate everything that the district has to offer. It also demonstrated that certain sites in the district would really benefit from a beautification exercise, and that certain mediums to the public felt fresh, and they felt interesting, and they felt really applicable to the character of the district. Alas, what we also learned was that some of the objectives of the NEA grant, which were really to implement these goals in Washington Realized, and to focus on these transit corridors, didn’t really align with what we were hearing from the public. So in the document, we tried to capture all of the feedback that we received, and then this sort of like, you know, interesting, but not advanced at this time because they don’t align with the Washington Realized goals, because we probably want to come back with the specific plan and talk about other projects that might fit into these, this, this public outreach that we received, but don’t necessarily align with the NEA deliverables at this time. So I think it’s important to understand, we’ll probably be coming back with the specific plan with maybe some additional project sites and ideas to pick up what we were hearing through this process. This is our public art inventory, and I’m really showing it to you so you can see that we have various different existing public art mediums, and they’re expressed in both modern and traditional ways. So the, the modern would be sort of the poem inlaid in the sidewalk, and they’re integrated into the infrastructure, and then the plaque being the more traditional way that public art has been used in our community. So as a result of the public outreach, the review of the existing policy information, a bunch of stakeholders, these written surveys, we came up with a series of criteria that we think work well for creating a collection in Washington that implements those Washington Realized goals that I described earlier. And so you can read them there, but really, they are to really sort of narrow down the things that we’re trying to achieve. And I think that the ones that are important are high quality and enduring value. We learned that people see these art pieces, these are the permanent art pieces, not the temporary art pieces, as being something that they expect to be lasting for generations. So we recognized that was an important. So we recognized that was an important piece, and that it was meant to communicate the history of the district and to tell its story. So that historic preservation, when we talk about honoring the heritage and history of West Sacramento and the district, that it's not literal. In some cases, it's very personal, and it's telling the, the people's story about their experience. And then the most important pieces that we came out with as well is that we want to provide opportunities for both regional and local artists, and that we need to integrate with the existing art collection. So as a result, we ended up with 16 pieces that align with the locations that are identified in Washington Realized, and we proposed a couple of additional locations for some of the smaller art pieces to reinforce those transit corridors. And so our outcomes that we're looking to achieve with this collection are two. In addition to implementing the Washington Realized, we have two new ones that we wanted to bring forward to, for you today, which are, one, to create a curated collection. So that means that they're thought of as one piece and not just a bunch of disparate pieces of art that are in the district, and, two, that they, because they're collected, they create a draw. They create enough of a sense of momentum and space that they actually be something that people see as an entirety, and they're drawn for that, not just to go look at one piece. So we have four priority sites that we wanted to bring before you this evening that we are sort of working on already, and give you guys some sort of, to quote this, what was said earlier, a little about how the sausage is being made in terms of how we're thinking about how these priority sites are going to be put together. So this is priority night site number one. This is located on the East Street corridor, and the Washington Realized document talks about a park in this location. What we did was we sort of envisioned what the future condition would look like, and how this art piece would support that future condition and integrate into it. And so what you can see is, we've got the ramps and the undercrossing, with the ramps to the upper deck for the I Street Bridge conversion. We have the undercrossing, that's part of the North Riverwalk being shown there. We're showing how all those pieces connect together, and what you get a sense of is that there's going to be this large art piece drawing people to these features. And so we have some pictures, the art piece, we were recommending a lit hanging sculpture that can be seen several blocks back in the district. And then for the park, we're recommending that there be these play areas, these fitness court areas, and that the bathroom, which is looking at potentially going through a retrofit, also be wrapped in an artistic impression, so that it kind of creates this singular space that all works together. And I have a rendering of what that might look like. The estimated budget for this piece is a little over $300,000, and we hope to, to commission this piece by 2021. Site number two is looking at moving the water tank, so the existing water tank, the historic Washington water tank that's painted with the crane. That is in the way of the landing of the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. It'll have to be relocated, so we're recommending that it be relocated to the south, and that the ramp structures for the upper deck be, wrap this new feature, and we reimagine what this water tank would look like so that it can be visible from the other side of the river, and that it continues to pay homage to this sort of historic bridge and this historic water tank. And you can see here, what we've also tried to do is outlay what we think the future roadway conditions will look like, based on what's in Washington Realized, and what the built environment, they look like in relationship to that. And we're proposing to have these more nature areas around there. That art piece, it was done in New York, and you can see that they've taken an old water tank and they've reimagined that feature, and this is an example of what that might look like. And again, the budget for that is, we could be, it could just be paint, which would be very inexpensive. The relocation would occur under the I Street Bridge Replacement Project budget, so we would just be looking at the budget to, to retrofit the, the, the tank structure, and we hope to have that figured out by 2021. The third priority site that we have is related to the Grand Gateway Master Plan area. There is a plaza in this location that's contemplated in that master plan document. We wanted to sort of breathe life into that idea and figure out, how can we take the infrastructure project that was just completed, that cycle track that was just completed there, and give it life and wrap it with a seating area, a activity area, and then make art the centerpiece of that? And so you can see in this diagram, that's what we've attempted to do. We're hoping to have a large sculpture in the middle that can be visible from down West Capitol Avenue, to have water features, seating areas, and then a place where a food truck could perhaps go. And this, excuse me, and this is what that might look like. And so you can see that there are these seating areas that have like a defensive space, so that when cars drive by, people still very, feel very much like they're in that space, and the trail that goes through it is still very much a focal point. And then the last piece is associated with the River One site. As you can see, something came into for design review, so we've reflected that in the site plans. There's two parts of this project. There is a linear path that runs along the Ziggurat Building, so it runs, it connects Third Street to the Riverwalk. And then there's also this component of perhaps really enhancing the Riverwalk and giving it more space that can be programmed and used for other than just a walking path. And so this is also consistent with Washington Realized. Washington Realized talks about having about a half an acre to .75 acres of space in this general location that's programmed for like passive park recreational features. And so the idea is to have the art piece sort of be the center of these spaces meeting around this project. And here are some ideas of what we could do to that linear courtyard, that linear corridor to kind of enhance it, distinct paving, lounge seating, a water feature in it, to kind of make it feel very public and inviting. And here's a rendering of what that might look like as you're looking at it from Third Street and you're walking to the Riverwalk, where you can see the very large beacon sculpture like calling you to the Riverwalk, and a public space that's making you, letting you know like you're welcome, you're invited, please come here. And again, the budget for that is about $400,000. We expect to have this design completed about 2021. So tonight, you're hearing part one, and part one is really the criteria, the outcomes, and the priority projects. The reason why you're hearing this separate from part two is because we have 12 other art pieces that we want to bring to you, and have you envision them all as a collection, and then walk you through the various different support, you know, policies and mechanisms that are there. We want to make sure we're getting it right. Like, do we get the criteria the way that we should be structuring it, the outcomes? And these priority sites, which are sort of in progress, we want to make sure that we have appropriately envisioned the council's expectations about how these really high-priority art pieces are working with these important improvements, either in our own infrastructure or in the private development sector. So once we have received that feedback, we'll incorporate it into the document, we'll bring it back. Not on September 4th, I, I have a conference that I've been invited to speak at, so I won't be able to be here on the 4th. I'll be coming back on the 19th with the, the 18th, the second half of the document, and then it will go into final production. So it won't look, it won't look exactly like this. We're having somebody polish it up and, and really make it look very attractive. We'll ask for your, to consider approval in October, and then post-approval, we will go through the process of incorporating all of these projects, the concepts, the mechanisms into the specific plan, and then bring it for you for actual adoption in 2020. So thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and, and receive your feedback.
All right. Councilmember Sandin.
Thanks for the presentation. It's exciting to see, at this point, kind of given, given our slow, a little bit of a hiccups at the beginning of it. And this, this has gone to the Arts Cultural and Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, it's been three times.
Okay.
And they did, they did approve the draft of the document. They were sort of, were very supportive of the first half of the document in terms of how it was structured. They did have some questions that they wanted just to bring forward to the council related to the second half. So we're working through the document to try to better address the, the comments and concerns that they had, which is also the part of the reason why we're doing it in two halves.
Got it. And it's, it goes back to them, gets their input, and comes, will come back to us? No?
No, they have, they have approved it with the comments that, that we received from them.
Okay, great. I commend you and the folks working on this about the creative ways gathering community input, like going to the space, and I, I was at a part of the pop-up gathering, and being able to actually create some art while you're asking about art is, is pretty creative, which is consistent with, with how we do things here. I also noticed in the report, there were also issues related to, that intersected with safety. Obviously, you mentioned economic development, and then identity, and valuing, valuing the community, and also cultural identity. So I'm hoping that we continue to have those pieces come forward. I, I know it's in the report, but I don't, it just wasn't mentioned, some of those weren't mentioned tonight. But I think, I think especially safety and activation of space, when you have pieces of public art, are really important to the community.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie, for, for your work on this and bringing this to us. You know, I, I want to reaffirm a couple of things, and I'll start with the importance and, of art, and especially as it relates to the Washington neighborhood. I, I think we've seen and experienced already how it can be a transforming sort of part of our, of our landscape and our placemaking that we try to do here. And so I fully applaud us kind of going, you know, right into this and saying, and kind of steering to the skid, if we're really going to do it, and we really got to do it, we got to find spots, we got to find how it activates. And, and so I just want to reaffirm that, at least for me, this is a huge priority, because we've seen it work, and we've seen it change the dynamic, whether it's the treatment of the, the artistic treatment of the barn, which has become a huge placemaking venture for the city and, and for the, the, the riverfront, but also just from, everything from the sculpture work on the riverfront and, and everything down the riverfront. It just, it's a huge investment, but it's a right one, because it activates, and all the reasons you said, it, 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 it does create a sense of place, purpose, and, and pride for the community that they have it. So I'm hugely appalled that we're doing this. I also want to join Councilmember Sandin around a lot of you, the way you've gone about getting feedback and the pop-up event. And I'm not just saying that because myself and supervisor V, I guess we're in the picture at the pop-up event, but, but it was, it goes into the essence of why art is important, because not only do you, it's just not, breaks down the idea of what you think art is, because you experience it. And then we had a temporary mural on the garage, and we opened it up, put some music in it, and some, some crafts on a food truck, and all of a sudden, you experienced it differently. And I can remember talking to so many people that were walking through there, who just all of a sudden had a vision of, oh my God, this, this neighborhood is so, so cool, and, and the neighbors from the, from the neighborhood were coming in and saying, yeah, this is always what we thought we could do in our neighborhood. And, and that's the excitement it can bring, and the fact that the staff thought of that, and, and, and that, like, this would be a, a, a creative way to solicit a different feedback, rather than, you know, let's show up at the city hall and have input with some pictures like this. You really go into the neighborhood and, and try to invoke it, or get it out of people, and watch them get excited about it, and you got some really good feedback. And I know I did that day, and, which is why I'm kind of thinking this is reaffirming our commitment to this, because it's hugely important, and we saw it that day. So thank you. And I, I think, I just want to, on the outcomes, you articulated, you, you want to check in with us around, are these outcomes we wanted? And generally, yes, I would say. Certainly on the economic vitality and the kind of the, the tourism piece of it, because it is becoming, even the urban farm seems, seems like a piece of art on the corner that people want to go to, and maybe if it was more activated, other than a working farm, it would be cool, the way we did the pop-up event at the garage, the way we did the, the event on the I Street Bridge, they kind of solicit feedback for a different purpose. It creates that. So, and that, and all of a sudden, if you found a way to sustain that, it would, it would generate that, I think. I think people would say, well, let's, let's go there, and, and it would be a place people want to go to. So yes, that's definitely a value. The collection of curated pieces, I'm not disagreeing with it, but I also want, don't want to overly, I get cautious about overly engineering, allowing the artist to express as part of that, right? Part of, I, I don't want to over-engineer kind of what we think it should be. Part, the beauty of art is somebody's interpretation of, or their expression of that place they're trying to activate, or their expression of whatever it is. So I just, I have seen art really work, or, or, but I've also seen public art that has been contrived and, and doesn't feel authentic around what that is. And part of the beauty of the Washington neighborhood is, it's, it's, it's authentic. It's, it's our oldest neighborhood, and, and one of the oldest neighborhoods in West Sac. And so I just want to keep that spirit, so I agree with it, and also be cautious with it, like, treat it very, very carefully. I, I, I agree with this, same thing with the, with the spaces we're prioritizing, because those are the right spaces. But again, I caution, are these just meant to be interpretations of what you think they are, or are these actually, I'm just trying to understand kind of the nature of, I'm looking at the E Street sculpture on item one, where you sort, it's really laid out, and, and you have a vision, whatever it is, but, but as it, that's not, this isn't the, it's a plan, but it isn't the actual landscape hand. It could change with the artist's, whatever we come back with, in terms of a floating sculpture, they may come up with something different that may be realigned to the, by right, is that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. These aren't, these are no, in no way are designs, but we have so many things that we're trying to fit into these small spaces. We have a park, we have a wave-finding art piece, we have a slide attached to the ramp that we're trying to make sure that we account for. We have all these things that are happening, and this was our attempt to visualize how they might be organized.
Yeah.
And what they might look like, and what our intents, our, the intent would be. So I think that when you see these art pieces being recommended, like this hanging lit sculpture, it's communicating what we heard from the public, which is, I can't see the river two blocks away, so can you please give me something that tells me that it's there?
Yeah.
And I feel like it's not lit well enough. Can you please give me an art sculpture that's lit? And can I make sure that when I go look at the art sculpture, there's something else for me to do there? And so we're, we're trying to respond with these concepts to the variety of different comments that we received with the public, plus all the planning work that's going into Washington, that's either, has been approved, or is in, is in concept, or we envision might happen in the future, and try to kind of like lay that foundation out, and say, this is what we're thinking when we're talking about.
Right.
The context that this art piece is going to be integrated into and supportive of. So we absolutely are not trying to over-engineer anything, but we don't want to miss anything either, in terms of communicating to that, to the art community, what we expect our art to do, and how we expect it to fit in.
Yeah, as I was looking this, the, the staff report on, on my device, on flying to, I was on a plane, and the person next to me is like, where, where is that? And, and, and it's usually the colorful, and it's like bold, and, and, and the part I'm as cautious of is setting of expectation. This is the idea of, of kind of what we could do, we don't know yet, but like, it's setting the groundwork. So I applaud the, the aspiration it brings. Like, you're, you're thinking big, you know, from, from playing tables to huge hanging sculpture to beacons on the riverfront, and I think that's good. So I applaud you, and look forward to seeing you next round. Thank you.
Councilmember Goreo.
Well, Katie, you did a magnificent job in putting this together, because I know it's a lot of planning, thinking about what's going on in these, you know, parts of town, and, you know, the history, gathering, you know, what, what has happened in the past, and trying to integrate that, and, and bringing in, you know, specifically what, what we are trying to, you know, bring out in our community, but also, you know, provide that beacon, and taking a look at the priorities is something I think I agree with, you know, you know, the I Street Bridge and what's going to happen there. And so just drawing attention to where we want our community to focus on, you know, and, and, you know, just draw, draw more attention to that, economically speaking. I think, you know, hearing where people want to be walking, and seeing that this artwork would provide some kind of draw, or some kind of sense of safety, you know, if you're going to look at providing, you know, the lighting. I think the lighting is helpful for people to, you know, feel a little more secure. Don't want to bring a sense of false security, but, you know, I think it helps. And also the bathroom structure. Been out there several times, it's really nice to see something, you know, to wrap around the bathroom. You know, there's all sorts of activity going on out there, but I think when you, when you add some beauty to it, I think it provides more positive energy, a more positive feel, and just is a good draw of people using it, and we pay more attention to it as a city. We want to make it more beautiful and keep it that way. And I think what you've accomplished here in the different areas where, where it has been prioritized, and then taking into consideration, you know, what the community feedback is, and, and as Councilmember Sandin, just making sure the commissioners, and I think they're finalized, but just making sure that everybody's, you know, checked it off and is supportive of it moving forward. And then, you know, just making sure that we have the funding for it. I'm going to, you know, look at that as in, in part two. I think that's when you're going to provide a sense of what that structure looks like.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Katie, for all the hard work you put into this.
My pleasure.
Mayor President Morosco.
Thank you. Katie, half of your presentation that I like is, is the information you provided in your skill and background, but the other half is your enthusiasm every time you present it. Thank you. I wanted to, I know this is probably in an upcoming presentation, because we're not talking about funding here, but there are some talking about funding here, but there are some folks in the community, and I'm just going to bite the bullet on this one, that'll be like, well, why are we thinking about public art when we have all these other looming problems that we need to address that should be addressed immediately? Is this not like a higher level thing that we should be doing and spending our money on? And I'd really like to, I want to be fully equipped to address that because I think I know the answer to that. But, you know, for the sake of just public education as to where these monies that we are seeking to fund projects like this would be coming from, as opposed to, you know, as far as a cost benefit with other pressing needs?
So I can speak to the funding at the next workshop. But I think the piece that maybe would also help in addition to understanding sort of like where the money is coming from is what public art can do to like our property tax base, for example. And so when you talk about making these kinds of investments and you're integrating them into the infrastructure, one, you have an economies of scale, right? You're already out there moving dirt around, you're already putting conduit around, so you're just adding another bit of conduit or you're, you know, moving another, you're moving this dirt, so now I'm moving this dirt. So you're getting economies of scale by integrating these public art projects into these existing infrastructure projects or partnering with our developers. And two of the priority sites are potential partners with developers where the developers are bringing in their own resources to contribute to these art pieces. So I would say there's that. But also by creating this collection, and it is a small, I mean, it's not a small investment, but we're not talking about $10 million worth of investment here. We're talking about a few million dollars that are very competitive for grants, just like the NEA grant that we received. And we're talking about just creating a tremendous boon in the economy in terms of like proximity to these art pieces will grow the property tax base, the sales tax that we've received by people coming in to experience this and they're going to La Costa or they're going to Burgers &amp; Brew afterwards, or they're going to the barn to have a beer. Those things are measurable that we can count on and say, yes, there are studies that say having these kinds of draws have a positive fiscal impact to the communities that have them. So you have to look at it that way, too, that it's just not where the money is coming from, it's what the return on investment is to the community. The other piece that I would add is that there has been studies that have been done in Portland where they have taken these wide open plazas that are drained of energy, put public art in them, put water features in them, created these movable kinetic spaces, and suddenly those nuisance behaviors that were occurring in those plazas are no longer occurring and people are going there. And so they're policing some of those behaviors. So we also see a cost in calls to, you know, shoo people away or deal with drug paraphernalia going down as well. So just, we have to think about the fiscal impacts of public art beyond just what it costs to put it in.
I don't know that I've ever appreciated public art until recently. I don't think that my background growing up and here in Sacramento, ever, the experience has ever allowed me to really sit and appreciate public art for, you know, the benefits that have been explained in this presentation. And it just seemed more of like, you know, when you're dealing with first world issues and survival issues, you don't sit and, you know, look at the flowers half the time. But a couple of things happened this week that make, that are perfectly timely. The first is I saw an artist, musician, use a piece of public art in West Sacramento as an album cover, sitting in front of the structure over on the river. And it was beautiful. And I thought, that's funny, it's one of ours. And he doesn't live in West Sacramento. But also just, you know, getting presentations about public health and transportation and the impacts of our community, on our community of art like this. Because I think about the childhood I have versus the childhood I want my children to have, and I want them outside and I want them playing until it gets dark outside and I want them mobile and, you know, out of their cars and playing at parks where they're proud and they're active and where, you know, you meet people and connect because I think we're really disconnected nowadays. And the potential for just making West Sacramento more of a place like that, I mean, we are fast forward on a fast track to, we're just like the talk of the region and I hear it all the time, how incredible the city is and its complexion. And when I drive over the bridge going home after a long day and I see the West sign on the pier and how proud I am to be able to cross over into the city that is, you know, advertising that we're here, this is us. And so it's exciting to me to hear the presentation because of the potential for more pride and more connectivity and more outdoor activity and just, you know, inviting that economic development you were talking about. It's, it's, it makes me very proud. Thank you.
I also think it's a great report and I think it reflects the evolution and our sophistication around these issues and also, and I hope also, maybe to put it a good word for over-engineering, a demystifying of public art and putting the public back in public art. You know, one of the longstanding debates I've had with your colleague in namesake is around like who decides these things? And, you know, frankly, when I read the report the first time, this is what I'm like paying attention to, like who is this artist selection committee and they're making most of the decisions. And I still want to engage in this, maybe when it's back for part two, about what that's all about. Because I think we have a tendency to think about public art being regular art, which is that it's something that none of us are capable of commenting on. It's only, you know, only art aficionados should be consulted about what that means and then it's our job to just accept and appreciate it. And that's not true of public art. And all of the things that you described in terms of return and investment are working criteria that ought to guide exactly what is produced in that art. And you can see it in the evolution of the art in West Sacramento. I mean, the difference between the sculpture at Ironworks or at the Riverpoint Plaza where IKEA is versus Subtile, as an example, is it's the qualitative difference in terms of the interactivity and what the, and the destination that is created. And, you know, I lived in Ironworks for a while, I never saw people drive from elsewhere in the region to come and interact with it. I didn't see people taking their wedding photos in front of it. You know, it's a fundamentally different experience, which is not magic, right? There are things about Subtile that you can decide that's what we're going to do that are different from what we decided to do or didn't specify at all in Ironworks. And so being very clear around activation and interactivity and the kinds of things that you described, I think is really, really important and laying them out, just as we would in, when we look at the design review application, we're looking at street level activation in a building, the same, we don't tell a developer what the building must be precisely, but we are very clear about a set of standards and what it must achieve. And, you know, how Instagrammable are these art pieces? Is a, I mean, it's, my thought is, you know, that's a funny thing to say, but it's also a very standard metric now in, you know, municipal tourism policies. And so being very intentional and affirmative in deciding that. Another example is, you know, I know artists love the Canico sculptures that are in my neighborhood. They don't generate that level of interactivity. The folks do come and see them once every six months and they're always art aficionados. Great, but it's not Subtile. And so really specifying what we are intending to achieve in these pieces. And I think that does tend more towards the flashy, frankly. I mean, that is, that is the Instagram generation and frankly, it is our city. I mean, we're this, you know, that's, you know, folks are not going necessarily appreciate the finer distinctions of, you know, the current hot artist out of Ghana compared to how they are experiencing the piece and how much it gets them out of their day-to-day life and experience and how much it marks the place that they are in. So I think you're on exactly the right track in terms of trying to specify some of these conditions and treating the public art like any other element of placemaking in terms of, you know, setting the criteria that will be very clear to artists like who, as I think we learned on the river, you know, they want that. They don't want a completely blank canvas. They want us to tell them, what are you trying to achieve here? Give us some constraints in which we can, you know, we can use art to transcend. So I think it's exactly right on track and I'm really encouraged to see this. I do want to understand more about how we engage local artists in particular, but also to think about other ways that we might do that. And so in the same way that the workshop provided a way for folks to make art in terms of their, not related to these things, you could imagine, you know, even on a, you know, one of these locations where our intention was to go search for a, you know, a particular kind of artist that may not have local in the city, but we could do a pop-up at that location and invite children to make their own miniature versions of what they would envision as a big piece of art, none of which would be the piece in the end, but that would provide a way for community members to engage in the place and in the process of art making and production and also provide some, you know, some feedstock for the ultimate artist competition as well. So thinking about ways in which the making of art, which is, was one of our objectives in our public art strategy, can be accomplished in ways that may or may not be directly related to the production of the final piece, maybe a way to think of that. And then last thing I'd say about the workshop itself, I also thought it was terrific and a great example of this different way of engaging people and members of the community in much more useful ways than the public hearings and all that stuff. I do think, you know, that it is, in the beginning of the presentation, look, you know, we weren't able to do everything that they wanted and so we're going to, you know, we're going to come back and we're going to try in part two to do all the things that they wanted. Don't overdo that, right? So, I mean, you know, for any staff, when you see a bunch of like really happy, engaged people providing feedback, I know you want to just do it all. That's what the public, that's what the public said. But, you know, when you're like us and you've like knocked on doors in Valhalla Mobile Home Park and then the next day you're talking to somebody in a park in Bridgeway Lakes and then the next day you're with, you know, with a homeless family out on West Capital, I mean, you're seeing the true breadth of the community. There isn't, there's no process that's going to produce the public's point of view. And so don't chase it too much. And also understanding that the context of what is trying to be achieved, it cannot be imagined by any of us, you know, at a pop-up workshop. Like so when you ask me today, yes, I'm going to say, well, but it's so dark and it feels unsafe, but you have to be considering this art piece being surrounded by an enormous hotel and condo tower and a bunch of other stuff. So it's not the same, the condition in which the art will ultimately be located is, won't be what the condition is today. And we did a good job of trying to encourage people to be imaginative, but they can't imagine the place that will be. And so the point of the outreach and of the engagement is to get exactly the kind of ideas that you said, which is people are interested in interaction, they want to know where the river is. Those are exactly the kind of things that we should be getting out of this engagement as opposed to do this, do this, do this, do this, do that, that require, you know, a sense of, you know, precision about the future that none of us have. So I thought it was a great, great, great workshop in that way. We should be doing a lot more of that. And it sounds to me like you're pulling the essential elements, the most valuable elements out of that engagement and the planning process. Great work. Are you, is that sufficient feedback?
It was awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. And then item 14 is a quick item, a workshop by the New York Capital Improvement Program and supplemental operations and maintenance O and M budget request for fiscal years 2019, 20 and 2020, 21. Mr. Raper.
Good evening, members of the council. So first I want to start off just saying, this is a, it was a big packet. There's a handful of slides here, there's a lot of information. This was a really big effort on everybody here in the city. Every department was really engaged and you can see they're all sitting here waiting patiently for all of your questions on their budget requests. But it's been really great to work with such an engaged and collaborative group. I mean, this has been a really good process and so I'm really grateful for all of their participation and especially also for the city manager just being very patient with me and working with me through this process. So as I start out, there is a lot of information in here. I know that typically you wait until the end and then ask questions, but I mean, if something catches your eye, please speak up and ask questions and we can try and answer those as we go along. So I remember how to work this thing, not that one. One of these will work. Oh, there we go. Okay. So the objective for tonight, of course, is we're going to present the draft proposed CIP and supplemental budget requests and fund balance information and then solicit your feedback. The point of this is to get all of your feedback and to go back to the table and kind of develop our final proposed budget, which we hope will be exactly what you're looking for when we come back in September. So for a little bit of background, we adopted a status quo operations and maintenance budget in June. A lot of people might be wondering why we're here in August talking about budget. Then in July, we came back with our CIP reconciliation project. Sometime in between, the department submitted their CIP and supplemental budget requests. And then we've had a budget team, which was made up of our senior finance analysts, myself, the city manager and assistant city manager go through on a first round, kind of look at everything, look at how the funding looked and make some priority rankings, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then we went back to, after a couple of meetings with that group, we went to the budget committee, which was made up of all of the department heads who went through, again, all of the projects together, kind of looked at the initial ranking and gave feedback as far as things that may have been ranked as a high priority that they say is actually lower than some of the others, or things that we were not proposing necessarily to bring forward now, that they made a great argument that we should. And so we went through that process a couple of times and then ended up with what was included in your report. So, and then tonight, we're here for the workshop and then we plan to come back to you, most likely the second meeting of September. I think there's only a few days between now and the agenda deadline for September 4th and there's a little bit left to do. So be prepared for that. So first, as we look through here, you've got a couple of different things that we're looking at. We're looking at capital project requests and we're also looking at decision packages. Decision package is something new. These are supplemental operations and maintenance budget requests, but they're put into a packet format so that you have all of the information hopefully that you need to make a decision. It includes the net cost, the funding source, the description, some justification, alternatives considered, consequences of not funding. And so hopefully it's kind of everything that you're going to need to know what it is people are asking for. And so our ranking scale, which you may note is a little bit different from the priorities or the ranks that you see in the detailed decision package and CIP pages. We had asked departments as they were submitting their items to go ahead and rank them so that when we got together as a group, we knew what was more important to them. In a lot of cases, that didn't happen or things came in later and so it was difficult to do that. So what you'll see in the fund pages when there's a rank, that is the ranking that ties to the scale. So for number one, if a project was leveraging grant funding or if it furthered a city council strategic priority goal, that was given a number one. If it had existing appropriations and transactions, meaning it's active and processed, that was also given a number one. And then those that were proposing to reduce budget or eliminate and consolidate with another project were also given a number one. The CIP new project requests, that's requests for budget for projects that are new, they didn't have transactions or budgets previously adopted by council, but that also furthered a city council strategic priority and were supported by the city manager and the budget team, those were given a number two. Number three were supported but depended upon available funding after funding the other priority projects. And number four are the items that you actually don't see tonight. Those are the things that we decided at this point are not ready to move forward. Excuse me. And on the decision package side, the O and M budget side, we just kind of went through and looked at, you know, if it was something where council already appropriated funds last year and we didn't quite finish spending them and we're asking for the appropriation again this year, that was given a number one. And then we sort of went through and looked at what was supported, but what was our, if we have enough money after we fund the really important things, then we'll go to the next important. So that gives you just a little bit of idea of what those numbers on the ranking scale mean. So do, give a summary of everything that you're looking at today. There is a total over the two years of $62.8 million in this budget proposal. Now, 34% of that, 21, a little over 21 million, is actually grant funds or external funding that's been secured or is, excuse me, being looked for for projects. The new funding requests for CIP that are looking at city funding is about 34 million. And then we've got about two and a half million of one-time O and M requests and 5 million over the two years, all funds of O and M ongoing requests. So we're going to look at the O and M requests first and in a little bit more detail, I think, than the CIP, although I have all of the detail in the slides if you want to get to it. So on the ongoing operations and maintenance requests, we kind of broke these down by major fund. In the general fund, you're looking at about a million dollars a year in ongoing. The general support services fund, this is where cost allocation comes in, is looking at about 400,000 a year. And just for your information, about 60% of that hits the general fund. We are looking at, or we're in process of doing a new cost allocation plan, which may change that sum, but I don't expect it to change a whole lot. The community investment fund, Measure G, is looking at about 500,000 in ongoing. The tax measure funds- The tax measure fund's about $150,000. Road fund impacts, $60,000 the first year, 85 the second year. And then for all other funds, and it's going to look a little bit funny, in 1920, we're looking at 605,000, and 2021, 200,000. Now, if you're saying, "If it's ongoing, how can it go down?", this really has to do with moving a lot of the CFD maintenance activities from the capital projects to the O-N-M budget, because they're really truly maintenance. And because we go on an annual basis and review those funds and look at the needs and look at the assessment revenues that are going to be generated, we've only put in a request for the first year, so we would come back at midterm for that one. Excuse me. Want to make sure I'm not missing anything as I go through here. So looking at general fund, and this one I'm looking at a little bit more closely, this is the breakdown of all of the requests for the general fund. So CIP requests are about 1.9 million from the one-time general fund. This is one-time and ongoing combined. The one-time O-N-M requests, over the two-year budget, 3.7 million. And then ongoing requests, like I said, about a million a year. Maybe this is pulling only one. And then this is a chart that I'm going to need to explain, but I was hoping to get everything in one page. So the bar charts show you the requests, one-time requests, compared to how much one-time funding we have available. Okay? So the red at the bottom is the one-time operations and maintenance request. It's a stacked bar chart. The green on top of that are the CIP requests. So they show you that between both of those, you're looking at just under $6 million over the two years. And the purple on top is the remaining one-time money. Okay? So the full bar is the one-time money, and then we're showing the usage if all of the items are approved today. And the same thing for 2021. And then for the lines at the bottom, the blue line that is at the top there, around the $2 million mark, is the ongoing surplus over the two years. The green line below that shows what the requests are of ongoing funds. And then one item that I kind of wanted to talk about is our ongoing surplus in the general fund includes our cannabis revenues. And one of the things that I had been considering and would love your input on is whether or not we want to leave the cannabis revenues in the general fund, or if we want to move them to one-time funds. And so because there were some requests here, I wanted to show what it would look like without the cannabis revenues. And without cannabis revenues, we'd be left with about a little over 300,000 in annual surplus for the year one and 600 in year two. The reason I bring that up is, you know, cannabis is still illegal at the federal level. It's still on the Schedule I drug list. So the federal government could decide any time to come back and potentially stop, you know, what we're able to do here. And then there's also some volatility within the market. You know, people are opening businesses and then changing and moving their businesses somewhere else. They're looking for the better, you know, tax area and things of that nature. And so because of some of that volatility, it's just something that I wanted to throw out there. Our revenues have been fairly stable. We've got three facilities operational now, about a dozen other DAs. But anyway, I just wanted to show you what that might look like. And then just as an FYI, this late-breaking news, today we got our final accruals in for property tax and sales tax. Surprising, very surprising, actually. So these numbers, these balances actually go up. For our property tax, overall, we actually received about 1.7 million in additional revenues this year over what we projected. And quite a bit of that, 400,000 was from property tax, the rest 1.3 million was from sales tax. And the, we knew that we were expecting some one-time kind of catch-up because of CDTFAs' implementation of their new system, and they weren't able to get us all of our sales tax revenues in time, and so we knew that some of that is going to be one-time. This is very timely, I'm meeting with the sales tax consultant on Friday, so I'll have a much better idea of how much is really one-time and how much is ongoing. And we'll have that information when we come back to you. But what that means for us is that our, we have about 1.7 million, that a big portion of that could be ongoing revenues. We've also got some expenditure savings from what we had projected for 18, 19. We're not quite finished with the year, but it looks like we'll have closer to about a $5 million surplus, so that just adds a little bit more to the one-time funds available for the two-year budget and potentially ongoing. And then just as an FYI, as far as cannabis, we had projected 670,000 in revenues this year. We got 665, so very, very close.
Did you want feedback on this question?
Sure.
On cannabis now? Or at least questions around it? So is your concern simply that the revenue side is just going to be up and down, or one day our wonderful federal administration may decide that we're going to cut it all off and it's not there? So how can we plan for it? Is that?
Sure, that's partially it. A year ago, when I started, a year and a half ago, we were fairly new into the new administration. It was very unclear what was going to happen. I think there have been some changes since then. Things have settled down, but at that point, I was really looking at, okay, maybe we ought not to depend on this, to fund our ongoing business. And then also, yeah, so the feds could come down. And there's also just been some volatility with people, the businesses moving around, consolidating, doing different things. And so I am cautious of programming all of what we now consider our ongoing revenues if there is some volatility to that. So, you know, I don't want to have to come back and cut positions or cut budget. It has been pretty stable so far, but those are my thoughts.
And I think my immediate reaction to it is, we should be cautious anyway, because even the one-time gains we're talking about, you got property tax and sales tax. You know, it could be all volatile in 12 months to 18 months, whatever, you know, the economy, whatever way the economy goes. So I'm not sure I would agree with it. I think if anything, we should be reminded before approving positions that, you know, that things may change. To me, if we remove it, it creates an air of, this is a pretty solid budget, and it'll continue. We can fund everything. And I don't, I don't want us to get, my perspective is, I always want to be cautious with whatever surplus we have today, because we've seen in the past, recent past, it can turn quickly. So, again, that's just my immediate thought. I'm not sure, there could be other industries. We lost a big hit on sales tax a few years ago, when another city just decided to take it away. And so, again, it's just, there could be volatility anyway. And so I just want to make sure, we should always have an asterisk, or you as our CFO should be reminding us around this point, around, like, this is good today, but it's a snapshot of today, and it is volatile. So I'm more probably not prone to budget against it until I see where it kind of lays out. But I don't mean, I just worry about putting it somewhere else, and then what? Right? And so, no, just this is my thought.
I think my concern was that because of the fact that, you know, it's, at any point, federal law could, you know, ameliorate, or, excuse me, obliterate that income, I didn't want to become reliant on it and have some expectation that we can fund some ongoing programs or services in the city, when then would be in a situation where we'd be, you know, holding our hands up and they're empty. So my, I mean, I get the whole asterisk thing. I just also want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to be using that money for something, we have an expectation that it may not be forever.
When, this was reviewed in the planning commission a while back for our first distribution facility. I think it's the distribution facility funding, correct? It's not?
There are multiple. So it depends on the facility, distribution, manufacturing, cultivation, and we've got at least one that does multiple.
And I think we were pretty restrictive for medical use. I don't know, we, I don't know if we ever, what decisions were made thereafter, if it was medical and recreational, but I think early on, we were really focused on medical use.
Correct. I think before, certainly before the law was passed that allowed for recreational use. But I think primarily now, my understanding is that the development agreements that have been executed are primarily for recreational use or a combination of both.
They're for both, actually.
They're for both?
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. That helps me catch up. You know, there are plenty of opportunities for this funding source for one-time use, but I, like Councilmember LaDesma, do want to keep it, you know, I guess, I don't know how you do it, but in a way that it is, you know, included in the general fund, but maybe designating it for one-time use opportunities.
So typically, that's what we're looking at. So we maintain two funds. One is the ongoing general fund, one is the one-time general fund. And so we just try to keep our one-time items in a one-time general fund. And primarily, really, they roll together for reporting purposes, but for our purposes, for looking at trends and different things, then it's just putting it in a different fund. What I'm showing you now is the general fund includes both, one-time and ongoing. We just look at our ongoing surplus, looking at general fund. And I totally understand, we can keep it even in the general fund and make sure that we're sort of not programming it necessarily entirely for ongoing uses.
And there are some federal proposals to allow recreational use. I think so, we can revisit this in the future.
Okay. Thank you. So moving further into the general fund, this just shows the ongoing operating requests. Again, it looks at, it's about $1 million the first year, 1.2 the second year. It includes a few positions, a fire inspector, which is trading a couple of part-time positions for a full-time position in fire, police lieutenant, police training analyst and police patrol sergeant, and a parks and grounds maintenance worker. The other items, we've included some money for maintenance of trees in city parks. We do some maintenance in trees in the CFD areas, but this is adding some general fund funding for the city parks that are not in those areas. Some funds to cover some recreation help, extra help compaction. I'm not exactly sure why it says 182,000 in the second year, because I don't believe that is correct. It must be rolling something else up. And what this is, is the minimum wage has been going up every year, and so we have to pay our entry-level extra help workers at this minimum wage, while the people who have been working extra help for a while are then maybe stuck at that level. And so it's some funds for, to move them up a little bit as well. We have included a city council contingency of 200,000 a year. I looked back in the fiscal year 15 to 17 budget, where it was identified, 405,000 was put away or earmarked for city council strategic priorities over the two years, sort of outside of the CIP and the other things that are already budgeted, and so I threw that in as well. And then the independent oversight for police, where you'll notice there's 45,000 here that starts in the second year that's ongoing. There's also a 50,000 in the first year that's one-time, to get that started. And then the rec center, community center, maintenance, those are items that were previously in the capital improvement program that we decided are not capital, so we've eliminated them out of there and added them here as a request in the O-N-M budget. For one-time requests, there are a lot of other things. The one-time costs related to positions, the independent oversight I just talked about. There's some carryover of previous year funds, which I briefly mentioned. This includes the cost allocation plan I'm having done, some of our revenue audits. In fact, we're currently auditing two of our cannabis facilities. And then there was 100,000 a year in the last two-year budget that was transferred from Measure K, adopted by the council for child center and active agent programs that didn't get appropriated for their use. And so we're asking to carry that over and actually appropriate that for them. There are a handful of other items. I'm happy to talk to any of those. We did include a contribution to the facility reserve of 2 million a year. This is to both fund some of the facility projects that are on the docket, requested in this, in the CIP over the two years, and then also to establish a bank, basically, for as we complete the facilities, vehicles and equipment master plan, that we have some seed money to start doing some of those, the things that come out of that plan. And then we'll also be developing an ongoing funding strategy for that. But for right now, we're proposing one-time money over the two-year budget to do that. Keep going unless you stop me.
Regarding the security, the city hall and the security, and taking a look at, you know, where our public buildings are, and maybe not in some areas where there's, you know, criminal activity, you know, high crime rates going on, looking into cameras, providing cameras and license plate readers, I think that helps to reduce the workload for investigations and, you know, sifting through, you know, instead of just having, you know, the vehicle, but having the license plate to immediately move forward quickly in that investigation piece. And, you know, thinking about our patrol officer who was shot at in a place that was pretty remote, if we had, you know, cameras somewhere along the way, I mean, we have, you know, a building there, if we had a camera there that might, or a license plate reader, it might have helped expedite the investigation piece a little bit. So that's something I'm interested in exploring.
Sure. I know there were some requests related to that, replacement of cameras, looking at LPRs, we do have a couple, and I know that we're looking at a couple of more. There are several items that were requested of, like smart cities, the Measure E funding, that are not here because they need to be vetted through our internal process, the innovation and technology team first. But my hope is that we can bring those back to you when we come back for final adoption or shortly thereafter. And as far as security cameras, I know we've got a lot of them here. The security study was really going to look at any of the deficiencies and provide some potential things that we could do to enhance the security at city hall and potentially elsewhere.
Thank you.
All right. So moving out of general fund, unless you have specific questions now on that. So the general support services fund, we're looking at 400,000 a year in ongoing requests, and a couple of those are positions. We're looking for an administrative analyst position that would be shared between port and the city manager's office, a purchasing manager and a GIS analyst, both in admin services. And then a couple of other items, professional services contingency, just to follow up on some of the things that have been coming up, fee studies and other things that we've been, had to do this year, we didn't necessarily have budget for, and so it would be nice to have a little bit of cushion there. And the NeoGov e-forms, GovList procurement solution, in response to your questions earlier, this procurement solution is one that would both make it easier to create some of these RFPs and solicitation documents for things that we're looking to purchase, services, goods, and also get them out in a broader audience. And then a legislative update subscription. So, is there any questions on these?
I think the political pro is a good publication.
The program manager admin analyst that's shared between, is that port CMO? I'm trying to understand that position.
I think that's me. Yeah, this position would be addressing some of the needs that we've had on both sides. The port, as you know, is a fairly lean operation, dozens of leases at this point, yet a lot of complex projects on the horizon. So we're looking to add some resources to that side of the function, and then also in the city manager's office. We have a lot of great staff, but we do have a lot of things that kind of are frankly council priorities, that it's hard to find the attention that is needed at the analytical level for some of those items. I'll give a couple of examples. The energy cost competitiveness item that we have right now, some of the other items that come up through that process don't fit always within a department, and it would be a big help for us to have someone who we can have do that kind of early work on the policy level as those items move forward. The main thing this addresses, though, is the help for the port. That is an area of need to free up some of RIC TOP's capacity.
Thank you.
And just to put some numbers to this, when we're looking at 400,000 a year in this support services fund, 60,000 of the general fund would be around 240,000, 250,000 a year, ongoing. One-time things, and you can hurry me along if you've looked at all of these details and you want me to stop. I don't necessarily need to go through all of them, so I might just pick out some of the bigger items. You'll see these medical and labor corrections throughout.
This might be a slide that you might want to speed through?
Okay.
In terms of policy implications?
Sure.
So I'm just trying to look at folks' notes and the amount of questions that they're going to be.
Absolutely. So anyway, for the medical labor corrections that you'll see throughout the document, those are, we've got new rates, so we were able to kind of look at what the MOUs and the amounts that the city covers, and so we were able to correct for some of those for information received since the adoption of the budget. The community investment fund is also looking for two positions, real estate manager position and a community investment specialist. You might wonder why a real estate manager position is so cheap, and that is that there are, a lot of these, the time of this position would be charged out to specific projects and other things that they're working on, and so would be funded by grant funds and the funding sources for those projects. And also looking for a development and housing assistance program, which I'm sure you may have questions on, and if so, Katie or Katie are here to speak to those. And then the one-time requests, pretty standard, and then they have the opportunity zone and community investment fund strategy, that's 150,000 in year one.
I do have a question on the... I do, I do have a question on the, is it the 400,000? What, so what would that fund specifically? And I know it's in the decision package, but Katie, you can give me a little more background on that.
Oh, she hit.
She hit. It is an oh, no, come on.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a development and business assistance appropriation, and we will be workshopping, we'll be bringing forward a series of workshops to talk in a lot more detail about the data we've collected and the reasons why we're making this recommendation, and we getting council to enact and approve some new policies associated with it. But essentially, we're finding some challenges to economic development and new investment in the community associated with our fee burdens, and also there's some other areas where we need to just do some due diligence work in order to support a project, more minor costs, but we would be looking to use this fund for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
If I could chime in too, just on one change I want to point out, this item, and there's a couple other like this, we used to put these in the CIP, and it didn't make, one of the benefits she's bringing is a better lens on that. These aren't capital assets, so you will see some examples of these where they appear in the operating funds as opposed to the CIP. But in the past, this would have been an item that you may have seen in the Measure G capital allocation, so they're, they're better placed in the operating fund.
Thank you.
Katie, I'm sorry, before you sit down, can I ask you to remind me please what the real estate manager and community investment specialists are supposed to do?
Absolutely. So we, the city several years ago had a real estate manager that was ultimately replaced by a team of, it was an interdepartment team of people that attempted to carry out all the necessary real estate actions for site control for projects, easements, construction, you know, even construction easements, PUEs, right-of-way takes. Right now, we have this huge project with this, which is the IceG replacement bridge. It has 13 acquisitions in it at minimum. It could extend beyond that. It's going to be a full-time job for two years. It's going to be a high priority to get all those acquisitions done. Some of them are fairly complex with occupied residential properties. So we, in order to keep the bridge on schedule, we will really need full-time staff. That, all of those acquisitions in that time are reimbursed approximately 90% by the federal bridge replacement funding source.
But is, is this something that we would anticipate needing after that project is concluded?
Absolutely. We have been making do basically economic development. My department has been doing the property acquisitions, but as we enter another project that's coming that has a schedule on its North River Walk, that has its own acquisitions. So as busy as we are and as many projects as we have going on, we really do need the expertise and the dedication because there's a lot of closed sessions, agenda reports, resolutions. You have to give a lot of instructions to the appraiser. There's just a lot of steps and process involved. Most of these are FHWA projects, most of them have federal funds. Also, Riverfront Extension, that we will be doing acquisitions for that project as well, another federal funding source. So almost all the acquisitions are completely reimbursed, and the real estate manager's time can be reimbursed from the grant source, but not in all cases because sometimes public works is simply doing a project and they, they have locally funded needs that will also be using this real estate agent. So each project will have to fund, they'll have to budget, they'll have to project and plan if they have acquisitions for payment of that position, either through the funding sources or through local funds.
And the community investment specialist, is that the same?
The community investment specialist is in our housing program. As you know, we've taken on a lot of new homeless, homeless impacts programs, like winter warming shelter, downtown streets, recently took on first-time home buyer program, and we have ongoing CDBG program, and we have a lot of monitoring to do, as well as the permanent supportive housing project and the jamboree second phase project. So we, we are, in order to continue to support all of those programs and those workload requirements, are requesting consideration of an additional position.
Thank you.
And if I might, we end with some good news here too that Katie hasn't even heard. We also received about 1.7 million in additional Measure G funds today. Between Measure G and EIFD, we need to figure out that split, but it certainly helps your position over the next two years. I like to bring good news along with all of the, all of the asks. So Measure E, another position, program manager, grants and communications, and then a couple of minor other things.
Why's the drone in this budget? What Measure E objective is it advancing?
Sure, I know there is a, I'm sure John, is he still here? Oh, do you want to speak to that one? We did the justification. I also want to note, this is one of them that kind of slipped through. I did say that the Measure E items were coming out if they hadn't gone through our internal process, and last minute I found out that this hadn't, so this will have to go through an internal process as well, just as an FYI.
Yeah, so this, you know, your point is well taken. This might be, this might be a bit of a stretch, but the thought was that the use of a drone for the kind of imagery that we want to use is kind of a combination of technology and doing things a different way that we've.
No, 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 no.
Historically.
So he was right, it was a stretch.
Yeah, that's, that's too much of a stretch.
Too much of a stretch?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, the smart city, that's not a smart city technology. They're more than a cutting edge. I mean, kids have these things at home. I mean, it's, and it's not for the purpose of improving services, it's for the necessary, you know, necessary functions in the communications and public affairs office, but it's, it seems like it's, especially given the, the capacity that's being drawn out of the general fund in other areas, it seems not appropriate to me for the, for the Measure E fund.
Okay.
I mean, it's not a lot of money, but that's where these lines get drawn, so.
It could come out of one-time general fund just as easily.
I wanted to ask about the grants position on this one. And, and I talked to the city manager earlier today about this, because we had said in Measure E, we wanted to avoid it funding actual people, right? And, and we had done it before, we had precedents in that, which was the homeless coordinator I think we took on for two years through Measure E. But we also agreed to that if there was a time that we tried to find a permanent home for it, because in my mind, this is absolutely, having a grants, person focused on grants wherever it was a city, hugely important, but Measure, and Measure E is a source where we can leverage those dollars to find that, and I get that. I'm just trying to understand if, I think a lot of folks, a lot of the departments would benefit from having a permanent grants rider, that is it right to take all this, all the dollars out of Measure E at least, and try to, try to find another place for this where it's a, it's part of the city structure that's benefiting everybody, not just Measure E? Because everybody would benefit from Measure E too.
And that definitely was a consideration, that's the rationale for why it is split. I believe 50-50 is the proposal between Measure E and Fund 104. Roberta?
That's not what it looks like here, although it sounds familiar and.
Okay, that was the intent. But your point is well taken, so I think the idea was Measure E is all about leveraging for multiple types of projects that we tend to match a lot of grants with Measure E funds for things like trails and other, other uses.
And I guess I don't disagree with that, and, but I think there's, if, if we are, there are other sources too that we're trying to have focus grant writing, right? And it becomes, almost look at it as a shared service that everybody that uses, that whether it's grants for parks or, or whatever else downstream could use. So again, I'm just want to flag that one. This is a workshop.
And it was intended to be split, so we'll go back and look at that, and then consider a longer-term plan for how we can at least diversify the way it's allocated.
Thank you.
I, I agree with that. I, that was one of the things that I flagged as well, just because of the conversation we'd had previously, and Mark Sawyer is the best thing that has happened to the city in a long time, and still I had reservations at that point about whether or not we should be using the money for that. I mean, we've all been pretty guarded about Measure E since its passage, but I appreciate that. We could look into that, and I appreciate Councilmember Ledesma's point.
I agree also, and I mean, if, if what we're getting back is grants that aren't at least half going to Measure E, then we're going to need to revisit that split. And I, I think there's a lot in Measure E, the home run's one of the most obvious ones where there's a huge amount of grant potential, but we don't have the capacity to write the grants that were, that were very attractive for. So there, I think there's definitely potentially even enough work for a full Measure E person. That may not be permanent, and it still remains to be seen. So I wouldn't want to fund out of Measure E even half a position and have it be 80% writing grants for either other, either other departments or for the department director's stretch view of what Measure E is. I mean, Measure E, you know, Measure E talking about trails, and then that has, has morphed in this document everywhere to be Parks Department, right? So I, I'll come back to this when we come back to the, the conversation, but these, some of these definitions have gotten bigger than, in our, in the strategic plan definitions also, climate action plan, you know, how do we pay for existing free maintenance? That's not a climate action plan, strategic plan item. I mean, I think this, this sort of document require, and this sort of budget requires a lot of delegation, and for that, and it has to be, and it has to be taken seriously in both directions that, and I, and I see that here. A lot of departments, and the CMO in particular, have done a great job of not claiming, you know, things that aren't really, they're not, they're not, that are stretches. But that's really important because we're, we're being asked to approve, in this, in this document, a million changes, and we cannot possibly review each of them with the level of care that we might have done with the number of changes that we were dealing with in the last two-year budget. And so we're depending on these rubrics and these algorithms to make our decisions for us, but they have to be done with, they have to, they have to be done with, you know, fidelity for those, for those to work. So we'll revisit some of these issues later, but I think this Measure E one is definitely one of them.
Okay, thank you. I know there are some items, excuse me, in the CIP, which we'll see actually in a moment. I have the breakdown by category. For, we did do, go back, there were a lot more requests here that we did read through, and I know for example, on the, the items that were parks that were requesting Measure E, we did, we went through to make sure that it was really the trail portion and that it had a good nexus, so hopefully, hopefully there's nothing else that slipped through that. But, but we will take a look before we come back for final adoption. And just as an FYI, even with the CIP projects that are proposed with Measure E, at the moment we're looking at, at the end of the two years, having about $6 million in fund balance there, so plenty for matching grants and other things, other opportunities that may come up within the confines of the framework. So road fund, there are a couple items here, traffic signal and streetlight technician. Again, you'll notice that this amount is a little small. Part of this, as you'll see in the utility funds, is that there's an electrician currently that is charged to water sewer and the road fund. The third of his position that was charged to the road fund would go back to water and sewer, and this would actually fund a full position here in the road fund. And then it's replacing an 18-year-old vehicle, so there's a lease payment ongoing. So we're looking at 62,000 for the first year, 84,000 for the second year. This happens to be one fund that just doesn't have a lot of ongoing surplus, so, so these changes would, along with the other, the public works reorg, the labor negotiation things earlier, will kind of wipe out the ongoing surplus in this fund. So this is one that we're really looking at to make sure that this looks appropriate and that this is feasible and sustainable. So to add a new position, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it, I have to look at a little bit of a longer-term projection on this one as well, but general fund could also be a, an appropriate funding source for this type of position, so.
Roberta, just as an example for today, that I think we had a power outage and some light signals were out. I definitely, you know, I mean, that, that could have been, it was a bad traffic situation. Unfortunately, it was displaced accusations towards our police officers, but it really is the city's responsibility to maintain those lights. And so just making sure that, you know, whatever we need to do, just to make sure that the lights are working after a power outage, during a power outage, that, that we're being responsible in that area.
Sure, we, this is definitely a priority. There's, there's one position currently that handles this, along with an on-call contract. It's not really sustainable at that level, so I don't know that this is the best place for it, but I definitely think that it's a needed position.
Right.
All right, so stormwater maintenance fund, again, looking for a stormwater maintenance worker in this fund, and $10,000 for rental of an emergency generator. We had to sell our previous generator because it didn't meet the standards anymore, and this is another fund that gets about $12,000 in assessment revenues. The rest is subsidized from the waste hauler franchise fees that are, that are technically general fund revenues, but we have, have those go to sort of a set aside to fund the items in this fund. So they wanted to do an emergency generator now to see how much we might need it before looking to see if purchasing is the right option. The stormwater maintenance worker, just as an FYI, we have one currently. It takes two to operate the back truck, and we borrow and beg from other, other funds, maintenance workers who live in other funds to do this. And so the original quest, request was for more positions, but we thought at least one was necessary to round out that crew.
As we're going through the special funds, you may consider skipping, going through detail on under $50,000 one-time fund, just for, just for time.
And we're actually at the end of the operations, I think. Utility funds, you'll see the other pieces of the streetlight technicians here, as I talked about, and then an emergency generator for the sewer fund. All of the other funds, these are all relatively minor, the CFD maintenance we talked about previously, the 411,000 is the first year, but it came, it moved from CIP. And then you see the other half of the port and CMO position here. And here's a summary of the new position requests, how they are proposed to be funded, and what department they live in. We're all looking down, so I'll wait for a minute.
Just a question about additional police officers, it's something I've been thinking that, and also, well, it's not a new position, but a one-time cost, if during recruitment, you know, we've had a rotating vacancy rate, and adding a recruitment bonus for experienced police officers is something I'm interested in exploring. Because, because we have, I think, you know, we don't have a significant growing, you know, criminal activity, but I think we've had a shortage for a while, and although they're working overtime to try to fill that in, that might reduce the cost of the overtime if we had, you know, the appropriate amount of personnel to serve.
Sure, I know there were requests related to that. We're adding three positions for, for the police department, or at least requesting to add in this budget, and, and looking at, we definitely know there's a need, there was a request for a large number, that we're looking at how best to phase that in for the needs that we have and also the funding that we have. So when asked to prioritize these, we're, we're identified as the, as the priority ones for now, but definitely noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciated the, the risk management oversight, the, on page 62, just the, the training lieutenant and administrative analyst. I know we've received some information about that before, and, you know, currently it's, you know, with ever-changing laws and new policies and procedures that we have to abide by, and also just in light of risk management and, you know, being on top of exposure to liability and recruiting highly qualified candidates and keeping an eye on our internal, internal procedures, I think this is a very, I think this is a good movement toward ensuring that West Act PD has trained professionals to lead us in the right direction. It's this, it's a very difficult time right now for, for law enforcement everywhere, and, you know, with increased requests for transparency and new laws that officers now have to address to, it's, I think this is a really good investment.
All right, so that's the end of the O and M. This is actually pretty quick on the side.
Why don't we stay on O and M?
Sure.
Because I probably, we probably should have segmented this more earlier because we, we've gone into pieces, but we, if we take on O and M, our discussion will go, it would be too hard to, to manage. So why don't we go to, any further questions, and let's have some discussion about the O and M budget, as if there's anything left. Folks didn't start really asking questions until the second half. start really asking questions until the second half. Are there other comments or questions?
I just have a question because we're seeing, and there was so much work that went into this. I really appreciate how clear and relatively easy it is to access the materials and to digest this and to see and understand the decisions. But what we may not see, just if you can give us a flavor of things that maybe were proposed, but were in the ranking of three or four priority, because we're seeing, like, what's risen to the top in the highest priority items, which is really, that's the most important thing that we do. And we're really fortunate to be adding, potentially adding positions, fixing some refurbishing things, creating new programs. So we're really in a fortunate position right now. But I'm just curious, like, more about the whole universe or what we may not have seen. Just a flavor, because I know there's probably three times as much as what we have before us or something.
It's not really on the O and M side. I think for the most part, we're looking at, you know, replacement vehicles and lots of new positions, particularly for public safety. We're looking at, how's the best way to face that in and what are our needs? For replacement vehicles, we wanted to do a little bit more due diligence. We've got, we're currently undertaking as part of the, one of the strategic plan priorities, a study to develop a master plan for the facilities, vehicles, and equipment maintenance. And so any of the items that were requested to replace equipment or vehicles or things now, we said, let us know what can actually wait until, you know, to be included in this plan. So we've got a, you know, can develop a funding mechanism and a timeframe for them. And to bring back all of the things that really needed to be done in the two years. And then also looking at for some of the things that we're proposing to be replaced, it doesn't necessarily mean they're off the table now. Some of them may come back, you know, next month. Some of them might come back at midterm or even between now and then. Just looking at our due diligence to see, okay, what, you know, how long has it been? What's our cycle? And doing a little bit more work around it. So primarily, it was vehicle replacement or equipment. In some cases, if there was a lease on a vehicle and it was very old, you saw the 18-year-old vehicle obviously needed to be replaced. There was another one that was several years old that was not an increase to the budget. That was actually adopted the first round. It was a continuation of a lease payment. But those are the types of things on the O and M side that weren't really included. On the CIP side, we talked a little bit about it, facility repairs and things of that nature. You'll see several of them in there because they're important to do now. But any of the others that could wait, we've asked to wait for the study.
So I guess you're saying we should be, we should be satisfied with that all the proposals coming forward take care of most of the biggest issues that are facing.
For the most part. There are also some things that I mentioned under Measure E, you know, apparel scanner, things of that nature that have to go through a process internally that we're hoping to bring back, if not when we adopt the budget shortly after. So there are a few things out there. And I don't remember all of them now, but I do remember on the O and M side at least, there were, there were very few that we asked not to move forward. And there were specific reasons for them not to go now.
Thank you. So are you just wanting, I'm sorry, because I do have a question just on the O and M budget in general, because you're early on, looked at the budget, kind of the revenues coming in, and what it would look like with these. I'm more, as we look towards these changes, I mean, 14 new positions, lots of one-time costs, but lots of ongoing costs we're picking up, which I get, and I appreciate everybody's work on this. And there's, everyone's articulating their need. But I'm also looking at, you know, I know you've built a long-term model around this because we're starting to figure in labor costs and everything else that might be coming. So I'm just trying to get, I don't know if you have that kind of lens on it yet, or we, because it's hard for me to kind of assess the impact of this.
Me too. That is one of the things when I get to the next steps that we have to do. Because this is a lot. And to tell you the truth, you know, I was hesitant to come up here and then throw up a slide that said we're looking for 14 new positions. But that's part of the process that I need to go through between now and getting to a final adoption. Our revenues are obviously higher, but we need to also look at, you know, what a recession might look like in the next couple of years. And then we've also adopted changes to the unrepresented salaries recently. The fire in Local 39 tonight, a lot of those impacted the General Fund and some of the other funds. So I've got to put those all into the plan. I haven't had sufficient time before getting this ready to do that. But that is the next step, to kind of look at that. And also, why I provided the priority ranking on the items, it's not on this slide, but it is in your packet, so that if you've got, if there's anything, you know, particular that kind of says, oh, no, this needs to go, you know, or, you know what, we can live without that if we need to cut things. We may, we may be cutting things before we come back to you. But that's still part of the process that we need to go through. I think right now, things look good. Leaving, you know, $300,000 or $600,000 in surplus does not feel right to me. But then also getting another, you know, a couple million today might change that a little bit. But yeah, we need to still look at that before we come back with a final proposed budget.
I think we want to get some feedback on the main items tonight and show you that we have a balanced budget in the two-year window. But obviously, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is to responsibly budget on a more of a 10-year basis. So that's kind of the next step, is taking the feedback tonight, plugging in everything. And before we come back for final adoption, we'll hopefully have a better picture of what it looks like in years six and seven, given some of the changes we're looking at tonight. But at least in the two-year window, we still have surplus on the table. And we know we have these needs that we're recommending that we, you consider.
Okay. So I want to pick up on this because I think that the general direction here, I'm conditionally supportive of, in the same way that Councilmember Ledesma just said, because we do have some significant needs. And you can see the departments, you know, their frustrations and their overload and all that coming through these proposals. And that is one of the things that we have to address, just as the, some of the compensation and other issues that we've been addressing in sequence through our labor agreements and been dealing with, another one of our, you know, kind of structural deficits and the capacity of the organization. So these are, these are necessary. What is very important to me is that we, that this is not a cultural change. We're not going to do this again. There is no way I would support in the next budget, three new positions in economic development. You know, I wouldn't support $5,000 for Politico Pro subscription. You're going to need to start in the next budget round, you have those needs, you need to make cuts in other stuff in the budget. And we should be seeing a very small number of these sorts of changes. This is restoring capacity in the organization where people have been, you know, stretched super thin, but it is not a new way of budget. It's not returning to the 2000, early 2000s form of budgeting where every year was these sorts of, we don't, we're not going to have the capacity to do 14 positions a year or anything close. And we haven't had the ability to say, okay, if our revenues are changing in a structural way, what do we want to do as an organization? That's not what our strategic plan retreat was prior to the update of the financial system that you've conducted. So we weren't able to do that. So to be able to, in that process, we may say, look, what we want to have, you know, the number one Public Works Maintenance Division in the U.S., or, you know, in the Western U.S. That's a new, that's a goal organization-wide. Or, you know, we want to have 24-hour recreation facilities open and the pool will never close. I mean, that is, that is our job as the council to set the large direction. Those aren't council projects. Those are strategies around the organization itself, which are, which require a community conversation and council action, to the point I was making at the last meeting. So that we, this round, the vast majority of our capacity, financial capacity is being devoted towards restoring the capacity of an organization, both compensation and staffing levels. But that cannot be, and it never has before, and it cannot in the future be our normal 70% or 80% or 90% of our spending. The council priorities piece, for example, that you have here, it was $200,000 in 2015, but before that, it was, you know, a third of the budget, or whatever the numbers, you know, whatever the formula was, like a third of the budget is compensation, a third of the budget is, you know, expanding out services, and a third is new initiatives and priorities. So there was a relationship between how much our resources were growing and all of those things improving. And the problem with this year's process, through nobody's fault, and in fact, it's the consequence of really good, solid staff work in your department and in the manager's office and among the whole team. But the consequence is, we haven't had the chance to do our fundamental budgeting job. And so instead, we're tackling compensation kind of on an, as, like, on a contract basis, because we have them before us. And now we're dealing with all these decision packages that are generated entirely within the organization. That's fine. But, and it's good, and it's, these are necessary things for us to do, but they cannot be the template for the next time we do this. And so partly for long-term fiscal health, that is part of the answer. But when we have a five or six or seven or eight or nine-year fiscal plan, it cannot program all the money out for continuing to build out more capacity in the existing organization without that being part of a strategy. And that strategy has to be done at the, you know, at the executive level and then at the policy, at the governing body level, I think, as we proceed. So as an example, the council, you know, the council contingency that's in here, that's very responsive to the conversation that we had, I think, last time about this. And that is, that's useful, but it's not the whole picture. The whole picture is the council being able to say, here's, here's where, you know, the organization ought to go, or here's an area of, here's a domain of the city in which our services, you know, we want to take them up in order of magnitude or what have you. We need to be able to make those sorts of high-level decisions with the executive team fully in those decisions, but that's not department-by-department filtering up. And so I've been paying attention to the bottom line, like, how much is going to be left for the next two years of strategic planning, not just our council strategic planning retreat, but the overall process of strategic planning to really be building the right organization that serves the city in the way that the city needs and on a going-forward basis, and that, where that's not derivative of just staff-level proposals. So I think this lays the groundwork for that, but I just want to mark that as, you know, as you're continuing to refine this, and also as you're communicating with your colleagues, that if you didn't, you know, maybe there's 14 here and you didn't get the five positions that you wanted in Public Works, and you're thinking, maybe next year, okay, but next year will be my year. I doubt it. I mean, maybe there'll be one, but it's not, we're not going to be, we're not going to have the capacity to do this sort of, this sort of investment in baseline capacity every single, every single budget. It's like, I don't want to set up expectations that we're not going to be able to meet without undoing our fundamental responsibility. And also making the kinds of choices that have come up in the council and in the community, you know, questions like, well, could we, could we accelerate road rehab if we were to spend more of General Fund? Not road-specific, road earmarked money, but just General Fund money that could be spent on anything. Would we spend more of that on roads? Now, I suspect the answer that we will come to if we were to investigate that sort of question is, what seems like a lot of money when we're, when we're spending it to hire a new community investment specialist, isn't very much money when you're trying to fix roads. Right? So it's probably not that, the bang for the buck in terms of the General Fund's not that high. But that's exactly the kind of conversation we should be having, is if there are core needs in the community or core objectives in the community, that we have the conversation about whether or not General Fund revenues in particular ought to be devoted to them. We need a, we need a mechanism and a process and a forum in the budget process or in the strategic planning process, or both, to be able to engage that. So I think it's a good template to get there, but I just want to highlight that. And this relates to this question around how the, how the structure of this works. I would love to be able to look at the document, having, you know, since we spent so much time on strategic plan, and both, both the team and us really have a lot of fidelity to it, it would be super helpful if in documents like this, that if I saw a strategic, that, you know, a budget item is keyed as, you know, strategic plan for, you know, whatever item, that it is essential to the achievement of the actual work plan that was set forth in the strategic plan for that item. So it's really about the strategic plan for that item. Not that it uses the same words as that strategic plan item, or it's in the same general topic, or it's the same staffer that works on it, but that it, when I, when I see that, I don't have to look at it again. I'm like, oh, no, no, we already agreed to that. When we did the strategic plan, we agreed, we're going to do this set of work, of tasks, as a council and as a staff, we're going to do these things. And here it is in the budget. I can't do that in this structure because too many of the departments have listed things that are, you know, like the community investment specialist, I think, was like, listed as affordable housing preference policy, which, you know, granted, there's probably a couple hours a week of that in there, maybe. I don't know, maybe it's a couple hours a month. But most of that position, I mean, like 99% of that position is for other stuff. So if I, if I had just taken that one for granted and said, that's the strategic plan we already decided, that's not really true. But it would be great if, if that column of this document were actually that. The, this is, this is the item to implement or fund the component of the strategic plan that the council, in consultation with our executive team, has agreed to as part of the strategic planning retreat or as part of a follow-up agenda item. That would make that much more helpful, at least for me, in terms of being able to skip over and trust that the decisions that you're making are fully consonant with the decisions that we already made in the process. So to me, that would be, that would be super helpful. And it's way better than it has been ever before. So this is not a criticism in any way. But the fact that it's gotten better, just to me, indicates that, you know, solid executives can do that. So I just encourage the, you know, to try to move forward in that way. A couple of other, sort of other, other questions and points. And one of them relates to sort of what Councilmember Sandin asked about, sort of what was just below the line. And I guess one question I had was, in terms of the, in the Community Development Department, and since it's, my job is to play the séance for departed, dearly departed council members, now I want to do it for Mark Johansson. You know, the agenda that we have had about sort of digitizing, making more and more of the permit review and all that, all those processes available online and digital and fully competitive with the most advanced jurisdictions in the, in the region and what have you. But we've been limited in our financial capacity. Was that, was there a decision package in that space that would, you know, or maybe it's pending in smart cities? Is there, do you know, is there one in, in this, in this universe?
I know there are two things that we're working on now, probably not entirely to get there. We're doing electronic plan review now for the CalSTRS project. So we are working on the right tools to be able to make that happen easily so that we can span, expand it out. And then there is conference room monitor, modernization, which is installing the big screens and the computers and things in the conference rooms, which allow for easier review of those things. The Community Development Department borrowed ours from upstairs and also purchased some so that they could sit in conference rooms and look at them. So there may be more to that for sure, but I know that we're making some small strides towards that. And I'm sure Shirley may have more information.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's, that's an example of the sort of thing that won't always, I mean, I know that our director's been supportive of these efforts, but it won't always get emerging, it won't always emerge from the staff. Because part of this is saying, is there something that we're doing by hand that could be done in some other way, which is not always proposed at the, you know, through the process, you know, through a process inside of an organization. But that has, I mean, I certainly hear that this is a relative weakness for some folks. And it's been something that we told Councilmember Johansson for 11 or 12 years, that, no, we're all for it. We're all for, everybody's for it. We just don't have the resources to implement that. And we don't have the revenues in, you know, in order, in order to support it. And so we're starting to take a bite out of it. Hello.
Good evening, Council. Yeah, so Roberta hit a couple of the points that we're working on. IT and our department is also working on a significant upgrade to Exela automation. But I, with my experience with Excel over the years, I'm, I'm not super optimistic it's going to get us the full way that we want to go. And so the IT manager and myself have also been looking at potential other systems that have come on the market and trying to figure out whether or not they can get us there and live up to their promises, which we've struggled with on some of these things. And so that is definitely something we'd like to move towards. In the interim, we're using technology that we already have, Adobe Professional, and definitely moving into the electronic plan review mode. So we picked, unfortunately, a large project to test run this on, but the savings was so significant to CalSTRS. And I'll just give you one example. Printing of the plans to submit for each plan review was going to run them on the tune of $150,000. So just even this one little minor thing is bringing about a significant cost savings. So we're hoping to really roll that out a lot further. Plus, it'll bring down our expenses for scanning. So.
Mr. Ledesma?
It's not only a question for you, Shirley, but it is a general observation based on your comment, which is, it was, as I think about what we did in the strategic plan with all of you and how we structured it this year, we didn't have, we're not where we are today from understanding exactly our revenues and our expenses and the great work the staff has done around this. But this is the time, and your point, thematically in the budget requests from all of you, we're just sort of a, we're reinvestment in our, in our services. And I didn't really take it that way. I was seeing it that way, but I just, I didn't step back until this moment. I was seeing it that way, but I didn't step back until this moment and realize this is the time. And I was going to ask that same exact question is around, and we didn't make it a priority in a strategic plan, but is where are we getting efficiency to offset this? Or, because this is the time when we do have surpluses and we do have, that we invest to make those long-term changes and that create more efficiencies. And that's the point you're getting at. And so I'm looking at it to that lens as well. And I get the fact that we have an 18-year-old truck that's on its last leg somewhere. That needs to be replaced, absolutely. But what else are we doing to look at the organization? And I wasn't exactly telling Mark Johansson, but there was a point around that I know we've held off on some of these investments. And I think they're maybe in here, maybe they weren't. But I think as we move forward, we need to keep that in mind, too, because it won't always be a growth of people. And that doesn't mean we can't grow our people to do other things if we have systems or technology that may pick up some of that efficiency. And part of this is the feedback from you that we need as we go into the next fiscal year and budgeting and all the really things we can save. Because I don't get that part of the conversation here. It's all about adds and changes and a little bit about what we're doing to make the organization more efficient. And that's the part we need to get pushed on a little bit around. How do we prioritize that to say, some of our budget needs to be in a new system for community development to get the planning done more efficiently? Some of it should go into parks so that we can better manage water use or whatever the case may end up saving money for us in the long run. Because there is going to be a cycle turn at some point, and we want to make sure we kind of get that. We won't be able to do it again. So I think this is a little bit of a shift in that conversation. But I think it is something that we need to kind of keep in mind. But I just wanted to make sure that that is a really good point you made. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Good question. That's all.
Question on the same topic?
Yeah. Yeah, Shirley, maybe a year or two years ago, we received a presentation from one of our, I don't recall the name, I just remember what I saw, which was a flip, like a waitress pad where they were taking work orders and they were exhibiting how if we upgraded to a technology system that would help our processes along. Because right now, we're like searching for paperwork orders and whatnot. Do you recall that presentation?
Vaguely.
That was a CMMS. You actually, tonight, on consent, there was an item that approved a consultant to help us develop what will end up being the product for that solution. So that was actually on the consignment agenda tonight.
You had to do nothing. That's fantastic. Thank you, Shirley. Thank you.
Mr. Member Guerrero? Just wanted to add, Roberta, you have very broad shoulders to take on this monumental task of understanding, you know, where we've been on addressing the budget early on. You know, just looking at last year's budget, could not understand which direction it was going, what it was achieving, how, you know, decisions were made, what was being funded. There were some descriptions in there. But I think what you've provided through this budget decision package and then also, you know, taking some time to meet with you a few times is to go over how the budget works, where things need to be, you know, where are our critical unmet needs? And me spending time with, you know, department people and finding out a little more about things that need to be addressed and looking at safety, you know, public safety, our core services. Those are some areas, and I see that in the budget decision package you prepared. I could, you know, looking at how you've created, you know, a format. It was, you know, as I said, you know, in the email right back, I was like, wow, this is very helpful for me to understand, you know, why it is it's important. And, you know, some of the safety issues in various areas of the department. It just taught me a lot about what was going on in operations. And just appreciate that everybody had to put a lot of work into this. And you did, too, you know, everybody here, management. And this, being able to wrap your arms around it, put it in the package for us to understand. Not ready to do away with this process just yet. I think it's helpful and I think it is informative. I think it provides guidance on what's going on, you know, administratively. And it is going to be tough for us to make those decisions down the road as to what we can and cannot fund and provide an explanation as to, you know, it'd be, we have to make cuts. And there's going to be that point in time where we're going to have to make cuts. But explain to the public why those cuts are made and explain why we need to invest in an economic project because it'll provide some revenue. And that it's going to be hard for us sometimes, whether it be artwork or a doc, you know, something. But it provides an explanation because we can show them, you know, this is the page that we're trying to fund. This is the project or this is the service that is going to deliver to you. And I think in this budget decision package, you really vetted it thoroughly. And you did such a great job in helping us to be able to articulate what our community needs. So in looking at a sales tax measure, people are trying to figure out where, you know, our sales tax funding is going and why, you know, we have that on the ballot and where the money is going. So, you know, this provides that accountability that I think has been important and long, just a little long overdue for me. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a lot of work. The departments put in a lot of work filling out all of that information. I thought that it would deter from the requests, but there was just a lot of pent-up demand, I think.
Yeah. Once. So just one other O and N comment, and this is on the Development and Housing Assistance Program. I'm supportive of it in here, but I'm going to be having an eagle eye with respect to what it actually is. So I'm not committing to supporting an ultimate package. I've just seen too many jurisdictions, including our sister across the river, where these policies are instantly internalized by project developers that just, you know, if you build in Sacramento and you build a certain kind of project, you just expect there will be a $4 million subsidy, and that's just part of the thing. You build the same exact project here and there's no subsidy. You just, you make your budget and your program around that. So this policy also ought to be, it ought to be heavily informed by the context of the development that's occurring and accounting for projects that are not moving. The council has set a set of other objectives around development that's more than parcel-by-parcel-by-parcel-by-parcel-by-parcel, which development assistance policies are often focused on. And, but I think what we have learned, sometimes painfully, is that there is an ecosystem of developers, that developers have multiple projects in a row and that our policies and our subsidies have to account for all of that. And we've not, nobody's done a good job of that in the region. So I'm just flagging, it's not really for Katie, not for you, but just to flag that, just sort of a standard one, that any developer can just open up and say, okay, you know, they really want me to build something, so I'm going to get a half a million dollars. I'm not going to be for that if it's not inducing, first, number one, real construction and that those developers, their entire portfolio are with the program in terms of trying to move forward the key opportunity zones in the city. So just to flag it.
There'll be a workshop on that.
No, I know, but this is, yeah. This is getting it in now, so. Yeah, Mayor President Roscoe.
Thank you. I mean, not that I have anything additional that's so profound, but, you know, looking at the new positions list is, you know, that's hard at first because, you know, there are a lot of projects that have been waiting in the queue for a long time. And I can point to the State Streets Road Rehab right now. I think about all the people that are walking along those streets and people who can't walk along those streets or that are experiencing, they've been waiting in line for a long time for some relief. And what the mayor says is right, you know, okay? A million dollars for new positions looks a lot different than what you can really buy in road. I get it. However, I'm not going to just submit to say, no, $10 million. Oh, never mind, we'll put that off until we have $10 million. No, let's do a million here and a million there. Like, take Alabama, take Vermont, let's do this in a piecemeal fashion. And I guess maybe I'm coming from a place where, when I'm looking at this document, I'm like, you better give me the most important stuff. What you did, you all did, as a team. But maybe I'm just anchored in a place where it needs to be fully justified. Like, there must be some dire need, we must be at risk, there must be, you know. And when I say that, I mean, like, I don't want people in a facility that has moles, for example. I don't want our city to be exposed to litigation because of improper training. I don't want, you know, roads to go unpaved or projects to go unfinished. I don't want us to lose grant money because we haven't moved on something because we lacked the fund. But then at the same, you know, time, and I understand that these monies are coming from different places that can't just be swapped. But it's hard for me to say, okay, all these new positions, yeah, we need them. We can all come up with justifications why we need things. I need a new car. Am I driving one? No, because really, it's a matter of the cost-benefit analysis, how it's really going to shake out in the grand scheme of things with all these other priorities. So I'm just signaling where I am. Like, it would be nice, and we could afford, and yada-yada, but at the same time, what's absolutely necessary for us to get our priorities completed? And, you know, some of these have been ongoing for a long time, and I just hate to see them put off if we can't, because we can't afford them because we're putting the money somewhere else.
All right, other comments on the O and N budget? All right, very good. Thanks.
Moving on. Thank you for all of your feedback. We'll look at the CIP now, and this is much shorter. However, I do have a ton of detailed slides. I'm really interested in them. So this just gives you a summary of the requests over the two years. So the green is 1920, the blue is 2021. And I've given the major funds and sort of combined some funds, so you can see what the requests look like. And somewhere I had the overall amount, I feel like it was something around $40 million for two years, that was everything, including leveraging about $23 million in grant funds. Oh, I just did still have that in there. Let's get past my boo-boo. So this slide gives you the major project requests, and it's anything that was asking for a million dollars or more in any fund. And then we've identified the one new project on this. So, you know, Ice Street Deck local match, the Station 45 facility repairs. One thing I want to note on this, it was originally requested out of the General Facilities Fund, but as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to build up a reserve there for future needs. And so we did have some funding set aside in the General Rehab and Replacement Fund that I'm proposing to use for this. So I think all of the projects on this slide should be familiar to you. I do want to point out a couple of things that I understand might have been confusing for folks. There are two State Street projects. So the one here that is asking for a lot of funding, this is the utility side of it. We'll look at a slide in a minute that has the road side of it, which we can talk about in a little bit more detail. And then just to let you know that, you know, things are coming in, the bids are coming in in a lot of places higher than we expected. The Climate Action Plan, for example, is requesting, you know, some peanuts in this budget, but it's going to cost a lot more. So there are a lot of things that we're kind of going back and strategizing and figuring out how do we fund these in the long term in the best way possible. So comments taken very well. Those are things that I want to look at as well. And part of the reason we wanted to present everything to you at once so we can get that kind of feedback. So, yeah.
Riverfront Street, or maybe you're about to get to this. Are you switching the funding source or what's the budget proposals in Fund 405, eliminating the appropriation or the budget amount for Riverfront Extension?
This, I believe, was a piece that wasn't included yet. You can help me with this one, I think. I believe it was a piece that was approved previously but wasn't in our budget, and so we were trying to add it to true up our system.
It's actually, it's actually an increase based on newer cost estimates. So if you recall, we changed the scope. We have newer cost estimates that I got from the Public Works Engineer. So I was just trying to appropriate the correct amount of funding. So we have, I believe, 3.6 of federal funds in the balances Bridge District. So this was an existing project. This would just be an increase.
But the Bridge District, the Fund 405 request is to reduce the amount by $481,000?
Oh, that, it's correcting that there was too much Fund 405 and not enough grant funds. It was just, it was a correction.
So I guess at this point, the question I have for you, my next slide is to talk about some projects with funding gaps and some of the things that we're working on with those. These are the major projects. There are many more projects that are requesting funding, some going up, some going down. We're really trueing up our CIP. For example, in the water and sewer areas, you're going to see where, you know, in some cases, we reduce by $2.3 million in one year and then two years later, we put it out. So we're trueing up both our capacity financially, our capacity with people to be able to do these projects and getting things in the right place. So that's what a lot of the adjustments are. If you want to go through them in detail, I am happy to do that or at least look at the projects that are requested under each fund. Totally up to you.
Well, I certainly think the ones with funding gaps would be important because as I think has been noted, I mean, the general fund that's being devoted to CIP, there's nothing that prevents us from spending that on other general fund purposes. So we tend to think about, we tend to segment, you know, these funds into things that we can and can't spend the money on. But we could spend the entire general fund on road rehab if we wanted to. And the general fund portion of the CIP, we could spend the entire amount of that on compensation increases for the Director of Finance if we wanted to. But we just don't usually consider that because we put up these mostly fake walls between the funding sources. So understanding what the gap, what the projects that have gaps, I think will, in some sense, get us to the question that Councilmember Sandin asked about what's below the line. So if we can see what's still, you know, what's still short.
Sure. And some of this really, you know, I don't mean to come and say, oh, my gosh, we need $20 million we don't have. We, as you can see through the fund pages here, you know, there's a few million dollars of Measure E. There's still proposed to be, you know, five or six. And now, after today, the revenue news, you know, maybe even more one-time general fund monies. You know, there is SB 1 money that's amassing as well. So it's not like we have obliterated our balances and we can't do these projects. It's just, especially for the timing with the negotiations and other things coming, it was sort of like, okay, I need some time to look at this and figure out the best way that we can manage this. And then also getting some feedback from the council because I don't know that you want to go and throw all $5 million of Measure E money, you know, at one project. But, you know, if you have the desire to do that, we can absolutely do that. So listed here are four projects. There are certainly others, but see, these are some of the major projects that I think have been identified as priorities for council. The West Capitol Avenue Road Rehab is the first one. The total cost estimate now is about $15.8 million. Again, it hasn't gone out to bid, so that could come in different. These are estimates, for the most part, with the exception of the Phase 1 courtyard, which we do have bids in for. You know, the State Streets project, for example, can be phased. This is one project that can go in two or three phases and they can scale it to the amount of money that we have available to do so that we're making progress in those areas. Some of the other ones that are leveraging grant funding, we have a timeline for those. And so we're definitely going to need to be able to, you know, come up with the money and meet the grant timeline. So, you know, I'm not throwing this out here to say we don't have this at all. It's just to let you know that these are projects that were priorities for you that you're not seeing necessarily in the CIP with requests that are going to fully fund them because we just need to go look at how best to do that. And it will likely go beyond the two-year budget that we're looking at, at least in some cases. I don't know if there's other things you would like to add, but.
Only that, the only other thing is that some of these projects have components that we're looking at as being things that we could not do with the project. So as we bring these individually forward, we may offer you some choices in terms of those components to make the budget more workable. The exception is probably sycamore. The exception is probably Sycamore Trail Phase 2. You can't really build part of an overpass. But on some of the other projects, they have more scalable components to them. So there's more to come on each of these, but we wanted to bring some awareness to the fact that we have these projects out there, all with competing, competing for similar funds. So that's really why we wanted to highlight it tonight.
Okay. So if you'd like, I've got a list here just of, you know, this was intended to be the end of my slides, but I do have, like I said, about 15 slides with some details on CIP. So happy if you're wanting to look into some of those, we can look at those. But some of the things you all hit on tonight is there are some unfunded needs, things that we still need to address, including, you know, facilities, equipment, and vehicles, the funding for that, once we get the master plan completed, public safety staffing, which I know was mentioned. The projects with funding gaps, one that we didn't mention yet is Bright Park ADA upgrades. And part of the reason that's on the list is that we don't fully have the scope and what that's going to cost. And it's also going to be competing for general funds. But I think we've also got a longer timeframe to complete that. So, and then making sure that not only are we able to fund the priority projects and keep the operations running, but that we've got financial stability through an economic downturn. And that's another piece of looking at the long-term model, and then also looking at some fiscal policies and the ones we have in place, and are they sufficient and are these, you know, the things that are going to keep us with the lights on, you know, and everybody working if something happens? So just things that I know that we need to look at and keep in mind as we're going through this. So tonight, I'm soliciting feedback. We are going to go back and continue to review the budget proposals, the available and appropriate funding sources for them. We're going to input these into the 10-year model, along with the labor set that you approved today, and just make sure that we are really comfortable with the fact that over the next 10 years, we're going to be able to sustain this. Even looking at modeling a recession and making sure that if that were to happen, you're approving positions, you know, next month that we're going to have to cut in a year or two, and making sure that we've got the appropriate reserves and things that we can handle that without significant impacts. And then we'll be returning to council September 18th with a proposed budget. So I'm happy to take any more feedback that you have or go into detail on CIP, whatever your desire may be.
Others? Well, for me, the slide that you had on issues slash unfunded needs, I hope you'll have more on that at the next, at the next one, because those are essentially precisely the things, at least some of the things, that are the trade-off for the 14 positions and everything else that are here. And so I would need to be, you know, I would need to be convinced, as sort of as the Mayor Protemp said, like, this, you know, the third position in this department that's being added is more important than pension stabilization, for example. I mean, we need to, we need to get down to the brass tacks on those pieces. So, yeah, I think we, I mean, we need to, we need, the action we take on the 18th should be inclusive of this, of these topics in a real way, whether it's funding them or at least setting aside real funding in order to accomplish them. And then also looking at the, well, you've already got the projects with the funding gaps that you just showed. I think those are, the State Streets project in particular, which I guess was just not that competitive for a lot of SB 1 funds, but it's a high, it's a high priority in the city, and it's got an enormous gap. So to me, that's, those are, those are the kinds of issues we need to be at the council level, in addition to, and potentially in substitution for, the 5,000 decision packages, which I really do appreciate the process, the whole process. I honestly had no expectation that there would be anywhere near this many. I thought when you were scoping this out a couple of months ago for us, I was expecting to see eight or nine decision packages, not the scope that we have. And it's, you know, it's hard to get my head around it, and then still also pay attention to these issues. So looking forward to how you rack and tile it over the next couple of weeks.
Your point to that, and that's why I'm not coming back September 4th, typically, a lot of these findings and things also come out of putting your projections into the long-term model, and that is a process that I typically like to do, and then have for the presentation, the discussion at a strategic planning session. So we will certainly come with a better version than what we have now, but look forward to in January, February, digging into this a little bit deeper.
Okay. And the way you've described the long-term model is making sure that sort of the choices that we are making, we can afford long-term, that's the right, that's the right frame, as long as we're not projecting, you know, growth that's going to cover some of these, okay, we're going to cover those things now, and, you know, our projected growth five years out from now will allow us at that point to start making contribution to pension stabilization reserve? No, no. We cannot program all of the 10 years of revenue growth this council, right? We're not, you know, we're confident, but we can't be that arrogant around our knowledge of the future and what the needs are going to be as well. So I think, you know, that having the 10-year projection is really critical for all the reasons that you, in particular, Councilmember Ledesma, have said, but that's not, that's not, that can't be an invitation to program out all the funding for that 10-year cycle in a budget that we're adopting today and trying to do the job of our successors, one might hope. On the Measure E CIP, on that budget, there's a bunch of stuff in there, at least on the printed-out copy that's, yeah, what are some of these? The ones after the trails?
Sure. So those are the two. I do believe the Union Street Pocket Park has a trail improvement piece as well. The South Port Levy Trailhead, and I know the folks who submitted these can probably speak to these in a little bit more detail, but I know that one really...
I understood, I just, in terms of the categories of Measure E?
Sure.
Median installations and safety features, and, I mean, depending on how advanced the advanced traffic management system is and the traffic signal system upgrades, how those are Measure E.
I don't know if I can do that here, but that's part of, on the Measure E piece, only what's going to come back to you is, are the things that have been fully vetted, that we've gone through all the process, looked at, are they in the right category? Does it really meet the needs? We haven't necessarily had the opportunity to dig deeply into this and make sure. And so we have categorized them the way that we think they'll be categorized in this, which shows that some of it is road rehabilitation project money, and then some of it is requested for smart cities, but it hasn't gone through the process. So we still need to look at those. There are chances that some of these are not going to come back to you right away, that we've got to continue to go through a process. They may come back a little bit later when they're getting ready to move forward. But this is kind of what it looks like currently. I just know we've got some more work to do on that.
Okay, just for whoever's on this committee that's reviewing these things, just because you can plug it in, or it requires a password, does not make it a smart city project. So, you know, just upgrading traffic signals with the same technology that everybody else in the world is already using and has been for the last five years, that's not smart cities. And so that lends on, because that's something we would have been doing already. I mean, it's not an annual expenditure, but it's not, this is not, it's not, we're not testing, improving, any innovation, it doesn't meet those tests. So I just want to flag that, because there are, there are smart city things that we want to do. But more importantly, on the road rehab piece, that's one I definitely am going to, hopefully the committee will too, take an eagle eye to those questions. Just because it's in the road, just doesn't make it road rehab. When we have that deep of a gap on the State Streets project, you know, some of these other, some of these other, which I don't recognize, frankly, you know, so they might be absolutely appropriate in road rehab, but, you know, what the highway system improvement project median installation is, if that's, I mean, is that really belong in what Measure E is for? Not just, not just the words that Measure E uses, the fact that the word road appears. I hope you will take a close look at those, so that we're maximizing every penny that's in that fund, in the road rehab fund for actual road rehab in the projects that we prioritize like State Streets. Councilmember Guerrero?
Along the line of Measure E, I'd also like to see, being able to draw down some state funding, because, you know, for example, the Home Run Program, there are some initiatives that were approved in the state budget that match the criteria of what we are implementing, and maybe, I don't know if there's some, something related to supplementation that we cannot do, because we are currently doing it, and we're prohibited from doing that, but if that can be explored, so we can have some Measure E savings, that would be great.
Heather, questions or comments right now? Did you have anything else, Roberta?
I'm good if you are.
We're going to the public comment now.
Right.
Next call.
Yeah, well done. All right, with that, then, we'll turn to public comment. Everyone's request by Pat Flint.
I have to commend staff. This is one of the best budget reports I have seen in many, many years, and I know you worked very hard on it, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. There's a couple things that I think need to be looked at. One of them is the flood and lufies being used for pump replacement in RD 811 area. Shouldn't that come out of the storm maintenance fund? I mean, streetlights and traffic lights, you have coming in of the road funds, and shouldn't they come out of the landscaping and lighting funds? So just things like that I'm looking for. Traffic improvement funding is being used for the Sycamore Trail. That is not a traffic improvement project, as far as I can see. It is a trail, and it was sold to the public as a safe walk to school for students. So that's something I would look at. General equipment fund to replace equipment at the rec center, are they not self-sufficient so that they can replace their own equipment within their own budget? And I just want to say that, again, I know this is a cleaning up of budget problems that have been occurring since at least 2000, well, 13 years ago approximately. And again, I applaud the staff for bringing all of this forward. I want to know where we are on the inactive funds and what fundings are available, or have you included these in the budget? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Rafer?
I'd like responses on all of those. Trying to look for the specific item that is using flood and lufies, it's looking for $80,000, and it is specific to making replacements. I know Charlene can give more information, but that impact the stability of the levy system, so there are appropriate uses of our flood and lufies.
So on that particular one, that pump is right up against the levy along the bypass, and that is a very old pump. RD 537 has three of them also in that same area. And SAC bypass is where, it's right up at the SAC bypass where it comes and enters the Yolo bypass. Those pumps do not have the appropriate foundation. They weren't constructed that way in the beginning. So if there was to be some sort of through seepage that started to happen, those pumps would, because of the lack of foundation, would actually pull levy material through it and potentially cause the levy to fail. So these pumps have been identified by, specifically in conversations with the general manager of RD 900, even though this isn't necessarily his district. He has identified these as, it would be great if we could find a way to fix it. We did try to apply for a grant. You might have remembered, what, two years ago or a year ago, in conjunction with RD 537, to try to get all of them rehabbed at the same time. But we weren't successful on that, and I think primarily because we only own one of the four pumps. So this, I felt, and Public Works felt, that it was a good fit for the flood and lufy, because we're primarily doing this to fix a foundational problem that will prevent a levy failure, but we're also upgrading the pump. So it's a win-win for both.
Great, thanks.
All right. So for traffic signal maintenance replacement, for the lighting and landscaping districts are assessment revenues we receive from certain districts for certain purposes, lighting in those areas, if these are things that are outside of those areas and outside of the types of maintenance and things that were identified in the documents when the district was adopted, then we cannot use those funds, they are restricted.
Including all traffic signals.
Yeah, and traffic signals are not. They are certainly eligible for road funds. In fact, unlike the Measure E road portion, the gas tax road funds are eligible for all things that have anything to do with roads, including traffic signals. The rec center equipment, the recreation center is a general fund item. The general facilities and equipment reserve is also many from the general fund. I know that in some cases, there are things because we want to have, are you going to, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want to over speak you on that one.
Want to grab the next one, too? Sycamore Trail, two funds?
Yes, good evening, members of the council. So the rec center has a few items that are actually items that we didn't know we had funding for until Roberta did a lot of the cleanup work. And so we do have a sinking fund for the rec center. It varies from year to year, and sometimes we don't always know when equipment's going to go down, or major repairs are going to be needed. So there's a couple of requests in the budget that include rolling over sinking fund money from year to year to give us a little more flexibility, and then also keeping open some of the CIPs that were created many years ago that have funding in them to allow us to apply to rec center improvements as they're needed. And we know that we're in the process of wrapping up our rec center business plan update, and there are several improvement needs that are going to be coming in the pipeline. And so this just provided us some flexibility to have that CIP stay open, so that we can continue to use those funds for projects as needed. On the Sycamore Trail, I think I might need to turn to Public Works staff to...
Sycamore Trail is a transportation project, so it's eligible. Is that it? I had one other question that just popped in my head. So the, was there a decision package submitted or under consideration to strengthen the staffing levels in development engineering? This is one of the most common choke points that I hear about from our development partners and applicants, is the, just the crushing workload, and therefore the response times essentially out of the development engineering unit, which I know is just a couple people.
No, we did not submit one for this two-year budget cycle. We actually just got a position filled with a junior engineer, assistant engineer. And so you should be seeing some improvement in the turnaround times, but also with the new permit technician model that we've implemented, whereby our permit technicians serve both building and development engineering, that has also, we've seen a definite, I lost my train of thought.
That could be 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, yeah. So that's freed up the licensed engineers' available time to be able to spend more on plan reviews, as opposed to answering more general questions at the counter.
Terrific, thank you.
Do you think that it's going to address, like, the need? Or do you, see, because that's one of those things where you get a lot of feedback. You'd be at the nail shop, and someone's asking you about why it's so slow to, you know, get a permit or whatever, you know, get your project through. And so, you know, when it comes down to, do we insert a, and I'm just going to pick something out of hat, a turnstile at the rec center, for example, versus like a situation where we have people in our community who are just frustrated with our processes? I mean, is it, is it another person in that department who's speeding that up the same weight as, say, some other project, which would be cool to have, but might not necessarily address as much of a pressing need? So, I mean, that might be the answer for us, that we just got the new person, and that's going to take care of it all. But, I mean, I guess that's, I guess my question would be, like, is there, you know, another position in that department that would ameliorate the problem altogether versus, you know, you can't answer that necessarily yet, I think, in comparison to other budget requests. But, I mean, with respect to that department, do you think that the new position will absorb or address the need?
I think it is already. I think we'll see an even greater, I think we'll see greater effects from that position in the near future, because they're still, you know, trying to get to know our city and the various plan reviews and getting up to speed. Part of some of the delays that you do hear about, many times when they come back to me and I look into it, I find that the initial submittal submitted by the applicant was woefully incomplete. So we have seen a little bit of degradation in... So we have seen a little bit of degradation in the quality of the plan submittals that we're getting. And so there are more and more plan reviews. And we're trying to push back on some of those, even at the counter, saying, no, you got to at least get, you know, more in your plan sets because otherwise we're just going to turn it around and you're just, we're going to keep doing this circular reference. So that said, I think some technology improvements, which I mentioned earlier, that myself and IT are looking at, will also help the equation. So I'm not necessarily thinking that a body is, is always the solution. I think we have some technology that we can put in the mix as well.
Great. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, yes. Looking at the major project funding gaps in some areas that there are some matching funds that we could risk losing. And then we also have some priorities and it's, it's really, I think, a challenge to decide because it's a $20 million funding gap. But taking a look at some areas like West Capitol Avenue, much needed improvements there. And then also looking at the State Streets road rehab, it's been a long time coming. I think those are two areas that I see that the city would benefit from moving forward. And, you know, I know the Sycamore Trails has a huge grant, matching grant, but, you know, there's, and it's, and losing that is really hard. I don't know, you provided some suggestions over a period of time, how some of these things could be delivered or taken care of. Can you provide a little more input on that?
Well, I think we're going to go back to the table and do our best to figure out how we're going to do these in a manner that we're not going to lose our grant funds and that we'll make progress in all of these areas in a reasonable amount of time. So for example, the State Streets thing, we could, we can phase in, we can do it in two or three different phases, do it over a couple of budget cycles if we needed to. With the Sycamore Trail, you know, the gap being only two and a half million, that's fairly easy to fund, but not necessarily if you're looking at doing all of these at the same time. And so we're going to look at, you know, how could we scale these if we needed to? And how could we maybe phase them? And what funding sources do we have available so that we can bring a proposal forward for these along with all of the other, the other items?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just to underscore, I mean, losing, losing grants just can't be an option, both because of the money that we lose, but, you know, as the council is well aware, we won't win any more grants. I mean, every time, every time we, if we send a SECOT grant back for one of these, our points go down on all the future grants because we don't deliver the project. And same thing is true for a lot of the state programs. So it's, you know, as we had the debate about the Linden Loop project that one time was a great example. I mean, some people go, well, why, just don't build it. But then not building that meant we would, you know, we'd be potentially foregoing 10, 20, $50 million over the next five years in grants that we would have lost. So it's really critical, as you know, and as the departments that are delivering these know full well, that we, that we figure out how to, how to meet these gaps. Any other feedback for the team? Thanks so much.
Thank you for the good work, everyone. And Roberta, thank you.
Oh, it's a, it was a whole team of people. And not the least of which is Becky, our finance analyst. She's just been sitting there very quietly, but she's been working diligently, day in and day out, to make this happen. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Get rid of that.
All right. Council calendar.
Good late evening.
Everyone else please go home. I mean, there's no reason to stay for these last few items.
Just one item, this Saturday, August 24th, is the Farm to Park at Brideway Lakes and that starts at 5:00.
All right. Any question on the calendar? City manager report?
No report. Thank you.
City attorney report?
No report.
Have a great vacation.
Staff, direction member to the council. We have no future agenda.
I sent a memo to the city manager and the mayor, but I think it might be out of, I think it might need to come forward at the next meeting.
Oh, is it out of sequence?
I'm trying to understand the process.
Do you want to, should we have an explanation of the item?
Yeah. So our procedure is that they're to, they're to be provided to the full, the proposal to be provided to the full council in advance, generally to be printed in this packet or through some other means.
Okay.
So that the council, so, and so that the manager is aware and can provide
Right.
some feedback to the council. This would, this is a hugely expensive thing to consider, or yeah, we could do it no problem, but also that members of the council can get, you know, can have time to consider it, just like we do every other agenda item.
So it's in motion to you?
Right.
And we have a meeting coming up in two weeks?
We'll bring it back on the next item or next agenda as a future item.
Future agenda request, it will appear as a written document.
So it'd be included in, because I had another one.
Yeah. So it would be, yeah. So those would typically, we haven't had anything since you were left, maybe, but.
Right. No, you've, you've done a couple of resolutions, I think, that I submitted and they, and then, yeah.
But not in this process.
No, not in this process.
So the, whatever you send, whatever gets sent to the manager and clerk would then get included in the packet.
Okay. So they get included in the packet, but not, so that was where I was confused, is it get sent before in a meeting, before the meeting, before it's in the packet? Or is it included in the packet and that's how we all take a look at it?
Yeah. It's included in the packet, but not as an agenda item. It's included in this section.
Okay. All right. Good to know.
And then when we get to this point, then we would, there would be, whichever council member's proposing it, might would say a word or two. It's not a full presentation. We turn to the manager and the manager says, you know, I don't, you know, here's the, here's the workload or whatever. And then we ask the council for essentially if the green light or not the green light.
And to reiterate the beginning, that process is a memo from the council.
A written memo to me. Correct.
So I just tried it out because I sent a memo to you and copied the mayor, but it was later than the packet went out. So we'll try it, we'll try it for this next meeting and see how it goes.
Okay.
Thanks.
And is it open to amendments as well, which is what I wanted to also add? If it was in here and it was, and you wanted to amend it, you know, to, you know, conform to what we are okay with passing, is that discussion included?
Yes. Although it's not a, it doesn't need to be a full-blown proposal because it's just a request to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
It would typically be, it'd just be typically a few sentences, you know, I'd like the council to consider
Sure.
this concept. And there might be background, but you don't, it doesn't have to come with a full-blown, you know, resolution and ordinance and everything attached to it.
Oh, okay. Because it's one person's request, so it would need concurrence, too.
Correct.
So I would be, it's an idea that's been fleshed out a bit
Yes.
to come here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Fleshed out enough for the city manager to at least give some feedback to the council that this is a, you know, this is a workload item or it's consistent with the strategic plan or some, you know, some background for council to consider. All right, then is there?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay. It's been moved by councilmember Cinteen and seconded by councilmember Guerrero that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, turned down, motion curious. Meeting is adjourned.